Do we have to have five to start, a quorum to start?
You can have a quorum, you can hate, you just can't make the decision.
Right, but we can get started because it's scheduled for nine o'clock, so, okay. Good morning and welcome to the July 20th, Saturday morning, early morning budget session. City Manager?
Deputy Mayor, thank you very much. My comments will be very brief. We're in the third of a scheduled four budget meetings. Today, we should include the departments. Next Monday, or this Monday coming up, we're going to talk about the risk funds and the non-departmental. We're also going to bring the police and the fire departments back, just to clarify some of their positions. We are working towards a decision point, and we understand that you're getting a comprehensive view. It's our hope that by the end of this next week, we have directions so that we can provide the final budget documents for consideration and action. We're trying to stay ahead of the information, but as Jeff will explain, there's always new information that's coming forward, and he'll walk you through that. The only change I want to make in schedule is that we had Human Resources in a lower position, but based on some scheduled activities, we've asked Jackie to go first this morning in Human Resources.
Well, and I can appreciate that, and based on, I wanted to make a little reschedule. So if you don't mind, if I could have the municipal court come first, and then Jackie second. I'd like to keep the district judge in good standing with his grandson, who has a 10 o'clock, his godson, who has a 10 o'clock baseball game. So if we can hear from municipal court, I always like to keep people in good standings, even though I don't always continue to be there. I'm sure that the honorable judge will not be long, and we can get through his. Also, council members, if we may, and I will reiterate this later, I want to hear, I kind of looked at the tape from last time, if we can hear everybody's presentation, and hold our questions until after their presentation, maybe we can get along a little bit faster this morning. Okay, if we may. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. You scared me a moment there. I hope I'm nowhere close to having a grandson. Correct it, it's my godson.
I did say grandson.
I do appreciate the opportunity to share some time with you to discuss the 2014 budget of the Topeka Municipal Court. I'm not going to go into great detail on the budget, other than to say it's pretty much a maintenance budget. It would look very similar operationally to what we currently are performing. But we do have one somewhat significant change that will occur later this year, and will impact us next year, but we have money set aside for that, and that is our conversion from our current software program, full-court program, to enterprise, which we are, has been in the makings for years, and we are hopefully moving towards implementation of that toward the end of the year. The municipal court operates with 23 full-time employees, a budget of a little over $1.8 million. Looking through my sheet. I do have a couple handouts for Mr. Sublet. I'm going to give them to you, but I don't want you to hand them out until I give you the high sign, please. Of our, excuse me, of our 23 employees, we have two judges, one court administrator, who also doubles as the court clerk, a deputy administrator, 11 clerical positions, four protective service officers, which commonly refer to as court security, and four people in our probation office. At the moment, we are suffering the pains of having two vacancies among our clerical staff, and one vacancy in probation. Those are being held open as our efforts to try to pair planned expenditures this year by 2% to add some savings to address current fiscal constraints of the city. That is a temporary matter, and we are already, as I said, suffering some pain because of that. People are, in my mind, being taxed in terms of their workloads, and we're hoping to get those filled as soon as it is fiscally prudent to do so. I do have two handouts. One relates to grocery receipts, 91, copy off the top, please. I'm going to hand out a document that reflects gross receipts of the court, and I want to caution you that if you have a document in front of you from your budget book relative to revenues, not to be confused by the numbers that I'm giving you versus those that you'll find in your book. I've labeled this document "grocery receipts," and that's significantly different than what's probably labeled "revenue" in your book, because there are monies that we collect that we don't get to keep. Biggest part of that is court costs that go to the state of Kansas. We also collect restitution to some degree that goes directly to victims, and of course, is not revenue for the city. When I was hired almost two years ago, I was given the charge of trying to change the structure of our receivables. We had, in my estimation, somewhat of a culture in the court of non-payment, that many people would get fines and never intend to pay them, and we didn't have in place the, what I felt was the maximum effort in collecting those. Our job is not to raise revenue. Our job is to administer justice. That's our job. In the context of administering justice, however, one of the ways we punish people, a principal way we punish people, is with a fine. They are also assessed cost. Our philosophy, although it's not our mission, our philosophy is if you receive a fine and are assessed court cost, we expect you to pay them. And consequently, we make every effort imaginable, and we try to use our imagination on a daily basis how we might also do it better, the ways to get you to pay. Unfortunately, many of the people that we deal with are, if not unable to pay, virtually unable to pay, and so it becomes a problematic circumstance, yet we never say, "You're not expected to pay." We've enhanced our efforts in the way of collection, and it's starting, I believe, to illustrate some dividends. The document that I handed out to you, if you look at the numbers that are emboldened on those month-to-month breakdowns, that is to reflect a month that was higher than the corresponding month the year previous. And we are now enjoying our 14th consecutive month of raising more money, bringing more revenue in than we did the previous year, the month in the previous year. And we're on target this month to be 15 months in a row. Help you understand that a little bit, I did break it down. You have to understand, we only control what's given to us. We don't write tickets. And the number of citations that are issued does vary. If you look over a 10, 15-year period of time, you'll see it varies substantially. In the timeframe, just 2010 through 2013, you'll see there is a significant variance today, last year, and the year before compared to 2010. We're on pace for about 6,000 fewer citations that were granted in 2010. So when you compare gross numbers, one year to the next, you have to factor in the number of citations that were issued, and that's why I calculated the amount that we're collecting at the bottom per citation, and I believe it to be significantly improved, that while we're writing, we, the city, are writing far fewer citations, we are collecting significantly more money per citation. And that's not due to the fact that the cost of those tickets has been increased. We did raise a few fines back in the early part of 2012, but that's not a significant portion of the change. I have a second handout. I just wanted to illustrate one of the things that we have done to try to enhance our efforts. Did you pass both of them out? Yes, can I have a copy? State of Kansas is a partner for local units of government, a program called State Set Off, whereby if the public entity will register its debt, if you will, from people, from citizens of the state of Kansas, the state of Kansas will seize assets in their possession on behalf of the local unit of government. Where that's particularly effective is in the spring of each year, when people are getting state tax refunds. And if you've registered your debt as a public entity with the state of Kansas, and they owe money to an individual, they'll hold that money for you. They collect a fee independent of the debt, and they forward the balance to the city of Topeka. We have stepped up our efforts to participate in that program. When I arrived, I noticed on rare accounts, there would be a notation "State Set Off," and I inquired, "What's this about?" And the longer I was there, I began to wonder why we had so many that weren't on State Set Off. Why not? Why shouldn't everybody who's delinquent be on State Set Off? Well, part of the problem is that's a monumental task, to take everybody that we have that owes us money, and just perform the mere clerical function of ensuring the data is correct before we transfer it to the state. Though it's a process, and we have increased our efforts to do that, and we have a long way to go, and because we're shorthanded clerically, that's proceeding slower than what I would like. However, I wanted to demonstrate to you how investing a little bit of money can pay significant dividends. I circled a number on this sheet. You can ignore most of the figures. The column that says "ACH Deposit," I have no idea what ACH is, other than to tell you, "That's our money. That's what we get from the state of Kansas." Through July, we have received this year, through the State Set Off program, over $196,000. That compares to all of last year. We received just a tad over $24,000. So that one step has already shown us that we can, by using our imagination, using all efforts to do so, we can in fact affect the bottom line. There's other things we're doing. Some things may get back to council members, I don't know. I've been surprised a little bit at the minimal amount of feedback that I've had from the citizens through their council member commenting about some of our efforts, because not all of it goes down real easy, one of which is we've retained a more aggressive collection firm than we once had, and they have engaged in more aggressive collection efforts, i.e., they take people to court. They reduce what is owed to us to judgment, and they go through customary collection efforts, such as garnishment, to collect what is owed us. And again, I'm surprised there's been no more feedback than I got, and fanning this flame will probably bring it. But nonetheless, we give people every opportunity, I believe, to voluntarily pay the court. We work with people, working out payment plans. Please, keep your plans. And at some point, we have to cut the cord and say, "You're going to collection." That has been a lengthy process in terms of evolving from the old collection company to going through the RFP process, selecting a new one, and having the new collection firm ratchet up the accounts that we refer to them. We, again, we review every account before it's referred to collection to make sure it's accurate. We haven't overlooked something before the collection company gets a hold of it, so that we minimize friction between ourselves and the debtor. That, I believe, will begin to reflect significantly over the course of time, given the fact that this collection company is without question more aggressive. I use one anecdotal situation. I got a letter from one of my friends. I have several friends since I took this job who reside in places like Lansing and Leavenworth, and I get every day, literally, three or four letters from my friends that are in those out-of-town locations. But one fellow wrote to me and was complaining to me that our collection company had seized $250 from his prison account, and wanted me to work with him to try to get that back. I was hearkened to the age-old phrase in the collection business, that you can't get blood out of a turnip, but apparently, this guy can. I didn't know there was that kind of money in a prison account, but there isn't now. It's in the city's account. One other thing I just want to mention, and again, I've gotten a little feedback from this, but I want you to be aware of it in case somebody has a position that differs from ours, but we advertise, before I got there, we didn't do it at all, but we not only do it now, we advertise and we encourage individuals that have large accrued accounts with the city of Topeka to talk to us. How much can you afford to resolve this and get yourself off to a fresh start? And from our point of view, it's how much can we get that we're not getting any other way? There are individuals who, if given the proper motivation, will make extraordinary efforts to raise the money to resolve pending issues. I'll give you one example, and this happens, I would say it happens two to three times a week since we've become more aggressive. But yesterday, actually, the day before yesterday, I got a call from a fellow in Tennessee, who has not, he's not encountered any difficulty in the city of Topeka since 2007, but he had considerable difficulty before that, and his account with us was $1,640. Through negotiation, we resolved that matter for $1,200 cash. He gets to walk away from his debt, get his license reinstated, start over, and we get $200, excuse me, $1,200 compared to nothing we'd been getting since 2007. And again, that's our approach. I welcome feedback on that, but I think it's better than the way we were approaching it before. Two more topics I want to cover, and I know you have a lot of people, so I'll try to move along. Municipal court, like every department in the city, was asked by the city manager to review, reflect our operation, and in a not-so-perfect world, to draw up a scenario whereby if the council chose to make reductions in the budget, where could that come from and have minimal impact on our overall operation? You'll have, I don't know where it's at in your material, Jeff can tell you, but there's a document in there that includes our proposal, should you choose to go that route, to effectuate a 5% reduction. And that would be to convert our full-time protective service officers that provide the court and the council's security to a contracted service. Our estimated cost savings to do that, I think, was in the neighborhood of $122,000, but a tad over the 5%. It's not "Do it partially, whatever to get," you do it or you don't. Again, that's not something we're asking you to do. That's something that we've given you as an option in response to the direction given by management. I will say this, if I hadn't made others, I wouldn't do it. We can cope, I believe, if that conversion is made, and I will tell you, probably the biggest casualty are the four families that would be involved by, four individuals needing to find some alternative to their current employment. But that's on the table, and I'd be happy to answer questions if those come up. The last subject I want to talk about before I entertain your questions is, and those of you that were here before, last year, and there aren't so many anymore, but those of you that were here, I remember the discussion we had on e-ticketing. And Councilwoman Hiller, I vividly remember the efforts you made to initiate the inclusion of that in the budget. Y'all did what you could, and for two hours, we enjoyed that funding. But, it's how long it was, Jeff, it lasted two hours. And it got, it did get passed in a, you know, in a climate where people were not talking about adding money. And so I did appreciate the thought. But I will say this, while you'll find it probably somewhere in the enhancement list under the Topeka Police Department, as I said last year, and those of you who are new, you need to know that e-ticketing would benefit the court as much as anyone. It would save us immeasurable, and immeasurable because we haven't done it yet, but once we do it, I think it will be measurable. It will save us hours on end of data entry and efforts to correct errors that are caused by the current human labor-intensive process that would be replaced electronically and eliminate not only the time involved to enter all this data involved in a citation, but also eliminate the chance for error, or reduce it significantly. So whatever the police chief says in the way of e-ticketing and how he'd like to have it, I say, double it. Prosecution would likely add their voice as a third party. All of us would benefit greatly by eliminating many of the steps that can be accomplished with one step out on the street, by issuing that ticket. With that, I hope I have told you enough and not taken too much time, but I will entertain questions that I can refer to other people to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions before, Jeff, what pages is he talking about?
So the pages, I'm sorry, 82, 82.
82?
Yep.
Okay, just so we're all on the same, okay, there we go. On page 82, just so that all council members are on the same page. Are there any questions for Judge Miller? Karen?
Regarding your two handouts, Judge Miller, is, are the dollars from the State Set Off collections included in this bigger total form?
Yes.
Thank you. And related to collections on code compliance, which you do when they come through the court, are you having a corresponding better success with the code compliance-related ones as you are with the others?
Never, never made the effort to break that down. That would be a, that'd be a pretty overwhelming task to break those out. But we, you know, we treat every case the same, whether it's traffic, whether it's criminal, whether it's code. If you owe us money, we expect you to pay it, and we will, we try to communicate to everyone, we will do everything within our power to collect it if you choose to not voluntarily pay it, including the next time you come around and have, or facing jail sentence, that will be taken into account if fines don't work for you as punishment. We have one other, I give this speech about 20 times a week. We have two, we have two ways to punish people in this court, and one of our jobs is to punish people. Our principal job is to punish people who violate the law. We have two ways to punish people, ones with a fine, ones with a jail sentence. Those people who refuse to pay fines and continue to break the law leave me with only one option, and I will employ it. And we try to give that message loud and clear to as many people as we can, so that it will resonate and have meaning, and we back it up with action.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, I want to acknowledge the fine efforts you are making. I, and perhaps the fact you haven't heard back from council members, is that the people that you are having an effect on don't reach out to us. But the other part of the population certainly, I think, would strongly support your efforts. And as I think everyone would agree, the majority are law-abiding people, and they appreciate the effort to take these steps against those who don't abide by the law. So I know there's strong support for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for the judge? I would like to say I appreciate your efforts on our collections, and we've seen a great improvement, and I appreciate that. And then also, I'd like to add that you really need to pick better friends, you know.
See, I've never, I've never enjoyed the privilege of picking my friends.
I'm not saying that you're hanging out with them, because I'm sure you're not hanging out with them, but anyway, thank you.
I have to tell you, one of the best parts of my job is the entertainment value of my mail. I'm going to write a book, just taking excerpts from my mail. It's really, it's very entertaining.
Thank you, and have a good morning. Jackie Russell, please.
Thank you.
Jackie, before you get started, it would help me if you let me know what page you're on.
Absolutely. The pie chart for Human Resources begins on page 60.
And also, hold on just a second. Are there any inserts for this? No, are we good?
We got them all last time.
No inserts today.
Okay, well, I didn't put mine in from last time.
But we got one from each, for each and every section last time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, Jackie.
That's okay. Page 60 is the pie chart. And as the pie chart reflects, 60% of the Human Resources budget is wages and benefits, and that accounts for 10.5 FTEs. An organizational chart follows on page 61 to kind of show you how those 10 FTEs are allocated. And I'll talk about that as I kind of go through the budget summary. Our total budget is just over $1 million, and all of the Human Resources operational functions are general fund, with the exception of the risk programs, and there is one salaried expense to that program. We have the major functional areas of recruitment, classification, compensation, employee relations, our benefit programs, risk management, occupational health, wellness, employee training and development, as well as responsibility for maintenance of the HR modules in the Lawson system. As part of our ongoing efforts to be as efficient as possible and conduct our operations as cost-effectively, earlier this year, we did eliminate one FTE in the risk management section and transitioned from self-administration to third-party administration to realize greater efficiencies. And so there is one remaining full-time employee dedicated to risk program management, and that's our risk program manager that works closely with the third-party administrator on the day-to-day manners, matters that concern risk. Our, excuse me, I got to look at my paper here. Our efforts towards the potential alternatives to balance the budget for 2014, we have presented a few alternatives. One of those is reducing our occupational health budget by $26,000. The impact of that is that we have been able to identify lower-cost alternatives for some of the services that we provide to employees through occupational health, and some of the required vaccinations. We are able to get lower costs through the Shawnee County Health Agency rather than St. Francis, so we're realizing some cost savings there. Additionally, we are in the process of going through and doing analysis of all of our jobs to identify functional capacities. This reduction would slow that process. The benefit of identifying the functional capacities for each job is that will allow us to post employment offer physicals that are relative to the actual work that the employee would do in the job that we're considering them for. Additionally, when there are work-related injuries and fitness-for-duty evaluations, that rehabilitation and evaluation would be done based on the objective capacity required to do the job that the employee holds. So that would be slowed without elimination, but it would not derail the programming of the occupational health function. Additionally, an alternative would be reducing the training budget by $24,000. In the budget, there's a $48,000 allotment for training, and this is training that Human Resources does for all employees and various types of employee development, as well as supervisory and management development training. What that would look like would be that we would have to reduce What that would look like would be that we would have to reduce tuition reimbursement for employees. Right now, the way that that is set up is that many of the contracts in the personnel code provide for tuition reimbursement to employees that want to pursue higher education. There is an allotment through this training budget of, it depends on the annual amount, but in this scenario, it would reduce that by fourteen thousand dollars. So we allocate a dollar amount each year, and then when that is depleted on a first-come, first-served basis, applications for tuition reimbursement are then considered by the departments based on the training funds that they may have available. So that would be reduced, and then we would also reduce citywide training and development opportunities. This would still leave us with about twenty-four thousand dollars training budget, which would be spread across, training for all employees. An additional alternative that would be, instead of those two that I just described, would be the elimination of one position in Human Resources. Eliminating one Human Resources specialist position would have about a sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-dollar reduction. We would allocate the responsibilities among remaining staff. It would not be a desirable move. It is something that we believe that we can still accomplish the tasks that we're responsible for. We do have the advantage of the furtherance of the implementation of the Lawson system that has a lot of automation and efficiency, as well as with the Intelletime, time and attendance system implementation, there's also automation that allows for less manual data entry on the part of Human Resources staff. So those are the alternatives for your consideration as you go through this process for Human Resources budget. I would just, on page sixty-four and sixty-five is the Human Resources line item budget, and I'm not gonna go through it very specifically, but I would just point out that contracted services, the major expenses in that area are educational workshops for employee development that are facilitated by outside instructor, outside instructors, and also occupational health services, which include pre-employment drug screens, physicals, random and post-accident drug screens, and fitness-for-duty evaluations. Because we have the workers' compensation and risk programs within Human Resources, you will see on page sixty-six is a description of the workers' compensation fund. And while I previously mentioned there is just one salary out of that fund, it seems to just go hand-in-hand with going ahead and talking about that fund since it's a major part of our departmental operations. If you would turn to page one fifty-three, that's where you'll see the actual budget outlined for the risk, the workers' compensation fund. And I would point out that when you look at the fund beginning in two thousand and twelve, you see there that you're seeing negative balances. And that is a reflection of liability that we have to pay, we have to carry for unsettled claims that are still in progress. It's not that the fund is running over expenses. As of July sixteenth, there was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars on hand cash in the fund. And as we settle claims, the liability that we have to carry reduces. And that number is the result of an actuary study that we have conducted each year. They look at our claims and forecast the liability of, of claims that are existing as well as potential future claims, and so that's where that number is arrived at. I would like to also talk about the health insurance fund this morning, which starts on page one fifty-five. This fund has the, this is where all of the health, the dental, the prescription plans are paid out of, and the benefit programs are administered through Human Resources. This budget is prepared based on no plan design changes. The numbers come from projections that Willis Consulting provided to us based on claims that we've received through April two thousand and thirteen, and they have a twenty-month period look back at claims to derive the projected funding necessary. We do fund at one hundred and twenty percent of expected, and that is built into this budget. The reason for that is we have what's called aggregate insurance or stop-loss that kicks in. We are responsible for all claims that the city incurs through these health programs. However, the aggregate insurance provides that if we go more than twenty percent over what is expected for our health claims, and that number comes from the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal, that then aggregate stop-loss coverage would kick in. And so with the fund having cash issues over the last few years, we are funding to that level that the stop-loss insurance would, would take over so that the city does not have the unexpected liability that we realized in prior years. This does, this budget that is here does include a projected increase of two point two percent for employee contributions. And under the joint agreement for cost sharing that the city reached with the unions last year, in two thousand and fourteen, the city would pay fifty-nine percent of the premium equivalent, and employees would pay forty-one percent. And this budget is outlined on page one fifty-five and fifty-six. With that, I will close and open for any questions from you all.
Thank you Jackie, I appreciate that. Are there any questions for Jackie with Human Resources?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll let you go first.
Okay, thank you. Just on that, on that group health, that page, on page one fifty-six, I think it was in two thousand and eleven that we had the huge spike that went up, a tremendous increase for significantly increased claims, et cetera. And I see, so the actual, now we have that, is two point eight million, then by two thousand and twelve, it went down to one point three?
Yes, we did have significant plan design changes, where the deductibles and co-insurances increased, and also the employee contributions increased significantly.
So that was, we cut that in half.
We did.
And then, since then, of course, two thousand and thirteen, we don't know where that will end up. How does it look?
I can tell you that through the end of May, overall expenses are running eighteen point three percent below expected. But I will tell you that with caution, because as the early part of the year, employees have not yet met their deductibles and co-insurances, the plan pays less. Once they meet those deductibles and co-insurances, the plan will begin to pay more of the overall expense. So as we get later in the year, that will likely level out to be closer to what we have expected through the budget.
But even the budget for two thousand and fourteen is significantly less than it was.
It is significantly less, and that again is because of the stability of the plan design changes that we made. The plan pays less overall, and there's a smaller percentage of those that carry the insurance that actually exhaust the deductibles and co-insurance. So just by that, the, the plan pays less by the nature of the plan design.
Okay. And for newer council members, this is a very painful process we went through two years ago with the high claims. Thank you.
Absolutely. Karen?
You covered a lot of ground with these different subjects. On that health insurance, I have just wonderful news to hear that it is stabilizing. If I recall correctly, in this year, employees are paying an extra twenty-five dollars to help shore up this fund.
That is correct. And as of, the most recent financial report that I had was as of June twenty-sixth, there was one point, one point six million dollars cash on hand in the fund. And with that extra twenty-five thousand doll, or twenty dollars a month, twenty-five dollars a month, that was expected to generate about two hundred thousand dollars towards building up the reserve in two thousand and thirteen.
And could you, could you refresh for me how, whether that was just to be a one-year thing, or how long we thought that was gonna have to happen? Is that gonna sunset if we hit a certain threshold in the fund?
Pam Sameski was part of the process of coming up with the cost sharing, and what was discussed when, there is not a definitive date in the agreement that that sunsets. But the thought was that she would feel comfortable that the fund was stable when it had a reserve of four million dollars.
So we've got a ways to go.
We have a ways to go.
Okay.
We continue, this is a fund that also is reviewed annually by the actuary consultants that the city hires to review all risk funds, and so we continue to review that along with the guidance that we are provided when we receive that reporting each year as they review those funds as well.
Madam Chairman, if I might.
Yes, ma'am.
When, when the health insurance fund suffered those troubles, in order to shore up that account, I'm foreshadowing a little, we'll talk about this Monday night when we go through the rest of the risk funds. But the city has one kind of overarching reserve fund that we use to fix fund other risks funds that are in trouble, because this is not the only place where we self-insure risk. And so the health insurance fund got, got quite a bit of cash inflow from that fund as well. So we, we also have with the twenty-five dollar per employee per month issue, we also have the issue of kind of restoring.
The backup fund.
The backup fund as well. So it's likely to be a while, as you indicated before that, before we can declare victory, I guess.
Thank you. Any other questions, Karen, are you, are you still have questions?
On the, on the workers' compensation fund, where it shows that there is an employee, is that one of the employees that is in your HR chart?
It is, the risk program manager position.
Okay. Just trying to keep up with the, with the numbers. Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jackie? Any other questions, comments? Jackie, thank you this morning. I hope you are okay with me bumping you?
It worked out just fine.
All right. You wouldn't tell me if it didn't anyway, you're a good person. Thank you. Continue to do what you're doing in HR. And our next person?
Deputy Mayor, City Attorney Chad Splett.
Glad to put him at the bottom. Only 'cause I can do that. I like to shake things up a little bit, keeps people on their toes. You see the city manager was, what, what, we're gonna change what? I know, not funny.
I actually think you're quite hilarious.
All right, Chad.
Thank you, I wanna, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Page seventy-four, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for keeping me on track.
Yes, page seventy-four. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I feel it's not often we get to talk to you about what our departments do, how we do it, and how things function. So I look at this as a nice opportunity to have that discussion. We have a very talented group of attorneys and support staff that work for you. Your law firm, they work hard. I, my opinion is they're efficient, and we try to be as responsive as we can. When this process started, my goal at looking at the entire legal department is how can we be lean, how can we be efficient, and how can we be focused? Because I think that's what we need to be in order to serve you and the city. And an opportunity to how can we get better at what we do? Now, we're here to talk about the budget, so on page seventy-six, kind of goes through our, our budget, our, an overall view of our budget. Our total budget is two point three million dollars. Of that one point three million comes out of the general fund. And the general, the general fund pays for the government law section and the prosecution section, and then we have a special liability fund that pays for our, what we'll call civil litigation. Out of that one point three million that comes out of the general fund, eighty-five percent of that is salary and benefits, nine point five percent of that is contractual, and most of that contractual number are paying for IT services, paying for building services, paying for maintenance. We do have a contractual line item that I believe is on page seventy-seven of your budget book that is titled legal audit. Essentially, that's when, when we're in prosecution, usually we have to bring in an outside special prosecutor. If there's some sort of conflict with our office, it's a city employee, somebody on the third floor's got a speeding ticket that they're contesting, so we bring in a special prosecutor in order to handle that, that there would be a conflict. So that nine point five percent of contractual services, that's where that's wrapped up. The special liability fund, which is nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of our budget, twenty-seven percent of that is salary, twenty-eight percent is contract with outside counsel, and forty-four percent of that is the special liabilities claim fund. When you look at the pie chart, and I don't wanna jump around a whole lot, but when you look at the pie chart that's on page seventy-four of your budget book, there's a big chunk that says contractual services. About half of that is wrapped up into what's called the special liability claims fund. If somebody sues the city of Topeka and there's a judgment or there's a settlement, by statute, obviously, we have to pay that out. So there's this chunk of money that we have set aside as the city, as good planners, to be able to plan for those occasions. But as we go through this, I think that you're gonna see that our litigation section has done a tremendous job of reducing what our payouts have been. I know that there's been, that our entire department has fifteen point five FTEs, and I think a lot of times people see that and say, oh, you have fifteen and a half attorneys? No, we do not have fifteen and a half attorneys. We have eight point five attorneys. I don't know how you get half of attorney, but.
Eight point five?
Yes. One of those is a part-time position. The rest are support staff, which, my belief, are as integral as our attorneys are. They work hard, they are very efficient, and get at what they do. I know from observing that there's been questions about how does your budget compare to the past three years? And if we look at our general, the general fund portion of our budget, in two thousand and twelve, that, our budget was one point four million. Two thousand and thirteen, it dipped to one point two million. And to explain that a little bit, we shifted some positions from the general fund portion of our budget into special liability. Basically, our litigation function, we shifted into special liability, and I believe we did that so that it would have some impact on the general fund. And our budget this year is one point three million dollars, which you'll see, our proposed budget, sorry, is one point three million dollars. As you'll see, that's a difference of about twelve thousand dollars. As I went through the line item, a lot of that is cost of capers, some internal maintenance fees, but it's interesting that you look at our compensation, actually, has actually decreased by seventeen thousand dollars. So, and some of that is when you hire people, what positions you hire them into, that's obviously gonna, gonna change what your compensation looks like. The special liabilities budget, as you can imagine, two thousand and twelve, it was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, and then there was an upshift in special liabilities when we shifted positions into that in two thousand and thirteen, and it jumped to one point two million dollars. Part of that also is the council, I would assume last year, 'cause I wasn't here, made a decision to increase our claims fund, to move it from, it was sitting around three hundred thousand dollars, to move it up to seven hundred thousand dollars. So in case we had a large settlement, we were prepared for that and we can deal with that. Two thousand and fourteen, we proposed a budget of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which is a decrease of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That mainly came from, again, looking at that claims fund and how much do we need to have in there, what do we need to shift down? So that's just an overall view of our budget of what it is. And I wanna talk a little bit about deliverables, 'cause I want you to know what you're getting for your money. I want the, the city, the city manager, everybody to know what is it you're getting for your money. When we look at the government law section, we have three and a half attorneys in the government law section. You're probably familiar with most of them, that'd be myself and Mary and Catherine, and then Judy Olander is a part-time position in that. So what do we do? We provide legal advice and representation to the city, which includes the city manager, the council, the mayor, and seventeen city departments. That's a rather large client base. If it was a private law firm, that's a good, good set of clients for three and a half attorneys. We deal with ordinances, we write and review contracts, we deal with open record requests, union negotiations, and daily departmental inquiries. Somebody from public works calls and says, hey, we have this issue, can you help us with it? I mean, those are, that is part of what we do. To put some numbers to that, last year, we wrote a hundred and seven ordinances, sixty-six resolutions. We drafted a hundred and seventeen contracts. We reviewed one thousand one hundred and forty-seven contracts. We reviewed 1,147 contracts. We were involved in 260 hours of labor meetings. Now, you need to understand, when you go to a labor meeting, when you're dealing with union negotiations, that's not a one-for-one proposition, that it takes about two or three hours of prep time for every hour that you're in a meeting with the laborer or a union. We processed 365 court requests. None of that includes just advice that when council members call our office, when the city manager has a question, when a department head has a question, dealing with those, that doesn't, that doesn't count the personnel issues we deal with. When we have a personnel issue and human resources needs our advice and we go down that road, it doesn't include those numbers. Doesn't include policy drafts, memos, consultations, any of that. So I think it's fair to say that in our government law department, we're rather busy, and we are doing our best when we get those questions, when we get those concerns, to respond to you, respond to the city manager and other departments in a timely manner. Excuse me. The other section that comes out of the general fund is our prosecution section, which is five FTEs. And that would be three attorneys, two support staff. They prosecute all criminal violations of the code, including violations of the property maintenance code. Last year, we dealt with 17,850 municipal court cases. I don't want to repeat that. Three attorneys, almost 18,000 municipal court cases. We have a 90% conviction rate. I pause because at the U.S. Attorney's Office, their conviction rate goes between 90 and 92%. In our municipal court prosecution section, we deal with what comes across the table. We have a citation, whatever's on that citation, whatever evidence we have, that's what we have to work with. When you're at the U.S. Attorney's Office, you have an unlimited budget, you have a number of support staff, you have all the resources at hand. And for us to have a conviction rate that is on par with that, to me, is impressive, that our prosecutors work tirelessly, they work hard, and they're good at what they do. We had 25 jury trials in district court, and I would say that's akin to a labor negotiation. A jury trial, you know, you got to go through jury selection, it's a different process than just a trial in front of a judge. And I want to, I don't want to mislead you, we had 25 cases that were appealed. We didn't have 25 jury trials, we had 25 cases that were appealed. In February, when I was the chief of prosecution for about three weeks, we saw some things that needed to be addressed. One of those was our discovery policy. I'll be quite honest, our discovery policy was lacking and needed some work. It was a liability for us, so we have revised our entire discovery policy in consultation with the police department. We've revised our diversion policy. When we looked at the number of diversions we were doing and the number of diversions we should be doing, those numbers were, we weren't, I don't want to use the word marketing, but we weren't letting people know about the diversion policy the way we should be. And we've seen an increase in that. We are, have a sign up in municipal court, pick up your diversion here, we're explaining how that process works. Because that really is the best-case scenario for all parties, is, you know, that first-time person that's made a mistake, we've all made a mistake, we want to give them an opportunity to be successful and, you know, not go through the court process. We went through an extensive staff reorganization in our prosecution section. We are right now operating, like I said, with three prosecutors. At one point in time, we had five prosecutors in that office. We reorganized staff. We became more efficient, focused on how we were doing things, on how we were doing dockets. Our chief of prosecution now has a full caseload, which is how it should be in most cities. Your chief of prosecution does have a full caseload. He's taken over all the code cases because that's something that I think is very important and become focused on that. I continue to have conversations, and they're functioning relatively well with the processes that we've set up and how things are going. I would just, I guess, echo what Judge Miller said. With the e-ticket process, we have an attorney that spends a great amount of their day just reviewing paper tickets to say, what is this word? You know, these are handwritten. What is this statute? Is this the right statute? And that's not a reflection of the police department, because if you ask me to go out and write tickets, you couldn't read half of what I wrote. So we're spending a lot of staff time reviewing those. Thank you. So I think we've done a good job in prosecution, we're continuing to make changes, continue to move forward. Our litigation section has three full-time equivalents, two attorneys and one support staff. They deal with all claims against the city and appeals, including tort claims and medical claims. So the best way I think about it is anybody, somebody says, city of Topeka, you did something wrong, we want money. Our litigation section deals with that. We have tort claims, which you're familiar with, and medical claims. Last year, we had a total of $24.3 million in claims made against the city. We paid out $52,000, or .021% of claims we're paying out. That is an extraordinary number. And then with our civil litigation, which are actually lawsuits filed, we had $6.4 million in claims and paid out $25,000, or 0.39%. And I think a lot of this, of why I think we're being so successful in civil litigation, part of it is a culture shift that, from what I understand, kind of came on when we, our new seat, when the city manager came on, is we're going to be aggressive, we're just not settling cases. If it's clear that we have liability, we'll settle those. But otherwise, we're going to, we're going to litigate those cases, and we've been successful in that. It'd be interesting, and I'd like to take a 10-year look back and see what our payouts have been over the last 10 years to where they're at now. I don't want to push the envelope too much, but if this was a private law firm and we were paying out less than 1% of claims filed, we would have people that were partners and be getting bonuses. That's a, that's a pretty darn good number. If you look at page 76-1, I get into our alternatives that we presented as every other department. We looked at what we could do to be more efficient. The alternative we put forth is to cut 1.5 FTEs, which would essentially be $100,000, and cut special liability, outside counsel be fee by $50,000. We currently outsource about $275,000 a year in civil litigation, and so we would be cutting that back. The 1.5 FTEs, one of those is a vacant position. So when you look at the one of the 1.5, that's not a person that we're cutting, that's a vacant position that we'd just be eliminating. The halftime, we do have a halftime attorney in our government law section, a part-time attorney, and it would be eliminating that position. The, I've had extensive conversation with our civil litigation to say, you know, the goal of becoming more aggressive is pretty soon you don't get sued as much. Is if the word on the street is, you can't just sue the city and they're going to write you a check, that you're actually going to have to hire an attorney and litigate this, you get fewer lawsuits. I talked to Shelley Starr, Chief of Litigation, they're starting to see that. That was a question prompted by the city manager wanting to know, where are we in that process? And where we're at in that process is we now have manageable caseloads. We're not underworked by any stretch of, you know, imagination, but we're getting to the point where it's manageable, where we're not seeing as much as we used to. And we could, we could cut an additional FTE if we relocated. Right now, we're running, what I say is we're running two law firms. We have a civil law firm on the third floor, we have a criminal prosecution law firm on the second floor. That's just how we're split up. When you do that, you have to have two receptionists, you're running two different offices. So if we were to all be in the same space, we could eliminate at least one position in terms of, and it's really that front, that front desk position that has contact with the staff. If we were to eliminate the 1.5 FTEs, which has been suggested, some of the, one of the tasks we were with is how would that affect how your work duties, how those come together? One of the things would be to transfer parliamentary duties to the city clerk. In most cities, that's the job of the city clerk, is parliamentary duties. So when those questions come up at city council, how many votes does it take to do this? Can we defer this issue? That would be transferred to the city clerk. And you think, okay, that doesn't take a lot of time, and maybe the mayor can speak to this as well, because we meet with the mayor every week, and that's part of our discussion is, is this a majority vote? Is this a two-thirds vote? And Mary Feeney spends quite a bit of time researching those parliamentary issues. We would reduce involvement in non-legal matters. What I mean by that is a lot of times we get calls that aren't really legal issues. They should go to public works, they should go to a different department. But right now, what we do is, you know, we take what comes across our desk and we try to fix the problem. So kind of referring those back to public works and saying, hey, we got this question, we really think this is your issue to deal with. Depend more heavily on finance to acquire correct numbers for union negotiations. We spend an inordinate amount of time, the attorneys did, trying to get to what are the numbers we can come to the table with. Instead, depending on finance to be able to produce that information for us, so that we can just go to finance, get our numbers, go to negotiations, that we're not spending two weeks trying to figure out what the correct number is. And the one thing that we need to do is kind of do an overall examination of our labor negotiation strategy and possible, possibly looking at having a labor management position, trying to see if we can fit that within our budget, because we do have another vacant position. And I compare that kind of to litigation, that we need somebody that's focused, what are the goals of the city, what do we need to do? Let's make this a year-long process where we are proactive instead of reactive. We have some long-term goals. Number one is obviously, code enforcement is for prosecution. We continue to work on that issue. Luther is committed to that issue. We're looking at processes, we're looking at how we go about those cases, how we can prosecute them better. We need to look at personnel policies, continue to have those discussions, look at our tort claims and how we process our tort claims and the appeals. And the big thing that, I'm a big proponent of cross-training. When I came into prosecution, the one thing I saw is you have this person that does this task and this person that does this task. And my question in my first meeting is, okay, if Luther, to use, I think it was either Karen or Councilman Hill or Councilman Ortiz example, if Luther gets hit by a bus, who's going to do the DUIs next week?
That's right.
Because I look around and nobody's done a DUI, that's problematic.
That's right.
So we're looking at cross-training. One of the ways we've been able to function in prosecution with less staff is I'll go down and fill in in prosecution. Seth Lowry, one of our litigators who has criminal experience, will go down and fill in. So looking at ways that how can we all, how can we do everything? How can we all be competent enough that we can handle any kind of case? So I know, I may have taken more time than I should have, but that's the overview of the legal department, where we're at with our budget and what our deliverables are for you. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you. I will be the first to say, I appreciate you on cross-training. And it sounds to me like you're trying to put together a team concept. And I will appreciate, I appreciate that. I think when you sit in management positions, when you, when you lower yourself, just like you said, if he's not here, I come down and I do it, that says a lot to your employees, you know, or your coworkers, that you are a part of that team and that makes them want to do that. So I commend you on that. The question I have is, well, one of the questions is, I seen in there, you said something about reviews bankruptcy claims?
Yes.
In the government law section?
Yeah, there are certain properties, houses.
Oh.
We have an interest in that will declare bankruptcy.
Okay.
And then to get in our line of getting our money, then we review those bankruptcy claims. And if we have to file an interceding motion on behalf of the city, then we do that. And Vicki in our office handles bankruptcy claims. And we had 269 filings last year on bankruptcy claims that we reviewed. She put in about 260 hours just on that bankruptcy section.
Wow, okay. And then also, you talked about to eliminate one reception if you guys were all together on one floor. So you mean to tell me the only thing that the, one of those receptionists does is greet visitors or greet?
No, we have an office assistant two, no, sorry, an office assistant one in our prosecution section, office assistant two in our civil litigation section. They physically sit at the front.
Right.
That's part of their job duties.
Right.
But Carolyn down in prosecution, she also processes discovery, helps prepare dockets. Lindy, who somebody may be familiar with on the third floor, she sits at the front desk, but she also helps process tort claims. But I think if we combined offices, we could disperse some of those duties. And part of that is just being in the same physical location, makes those tasks easier. And we can spread some of that out to other support staff and become more efficient, but reduce that by a position.
Okay, okay. All right. Did you have something to, okay, all right. Are there any questions for Chad, Mr. Mayor?
Couple of comments. You intimated that you have to secure outside contractual help when someone on the third floor has speeding ticket. I just wanted to relate that I know Mr. Colston and I, and I think Sean and Susie, I only speak for myself, that I haven't had that need for contractual services. But perhaps if someone else on the third floor does, I certainly support.
I was not speaking of anybody of presence.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was not speaking of anybody that was here or associated with anybody that is here.
All right, but I appreciate that.
Call the mayor out.
Hypothetical situation, okay.
Right.
But other than, yeah, I want to comment also, I think your view of addressing the issues and how it can be a better functioning department, certainly your leadership there is excellent, and I support that in the directions that you're taking.
Thank you, sir.
Because we, I don't, I don't know about you, Larry, but I hear all the time, we've got too many attorneys sitting up there doing nothing. Too many prosecuting attorneys doing nothing. I hear that, I've heard that since 2005, April of 2005.
Yeah, 16,000 cases and prosecutions a few, so.
Are there any other questions or comments, Karen?
Well, I am so encouraged by your report and by the kind of feedback that we're getting and the kind of success that the staff is having. So I first and foremost want to thank you, and I loved hearing that code compliance is ratcheting real high on your list for something to address as well. Two questions. One, in this idea of consolidating space, I know there's a lot of space on the second floor of City Hall. Do you actually have something in mind, or is that just out there?
The city manager and I have had discussions about it, and I believe the process is, we kind of want to get through this budget season and really look at the space, but I think that's something that's on the horizon that we have discussed.
It's just a question, whether, whether it was a possibility if we proceeded with that thought.
That is being addressed, Karen. Can we move on and not, and not take so much time with that this morning?
Okay, I just wanted to know.
No, but that's a good question, and it is being addressed because I've asked the city manager that.
Okay. The second question I had was that I know that the part-time person that we've had has been spending almost all of her time on the Parks and Rec consolidation issues for the last year and a half. So in part with your suggestion there, is there a sense that that could wrap up and not cause a hardship on others if that position were gone?
Yeah, the question I've had with staff is that that's going to wrap up, that I would take more of a role in kind of the day-to-day personnel issues that come up to relieve that from Catherine, and then if there were other duties that needed to shift from that position that Catherine can take on some of those duties.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Deputy Mayor. I want to just commend you for the work that you do. I appreciate that you're setting the tone in our city that we're no longer, you know, go for the city, you know? Let's try to get some cash out of it. That's good, we set the tone. And, you know, the work that you do with the staff that you have is commendable. I appreciate that. Thank you to your staff. And it's, first time in this budgetary process, this is actually refreshing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other comments before you wrap up today, Chad?
Now, I just have a five-year-old that's waiting for his daddy to take him swimming, so.
You know what? If I'd have knew that, I would have moved you to the front.
No, that's okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
I do want to, thank you, Chad. Keep in mind, again, the e-ticketing, and we'll get to that, to talk about that for the new members. I think that's something that, why finance is coming up forward, please? I think that's something that we should talk about separately. Remember that you've heard it in legal, municipal court, and also with our, the police department. And so that's already hit three, three departments, and I did some extensive background on it a couple of years ago, and I think it would be very time-consuming and worth our while. I just, this might be a question for, I don't know, the city manager. I don't remember, was it the startup fee? I don't remember, was it the startup fee, city manager, that's costly, it's just food for thought? That's one of the questions I'll have, is it, is it the startup fee to get it? I think it was that, to get it started. But that would be one of my questions, not now, but just food for thought if you want to write that down. I think that's what it was in our budget and how much it was. So when we have that discussion, we'll have that. Thank you. All right, Mr. White?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. I want to actually start, if I could, with a big picture for a second. At your place this morning when you came in was supplement number three, which we both three-hole punched and then stapled. Sorry if you plan to put it in your binder and actually flip through it. I wanted to address two major items in there, and then there are some answers to questions that we, that you had pending for us. Hopefully those will be helpful. But I want to talk quickly about the notice of public hearing on the budget and, and where we stand in terms of general fund balance today. So the first item, Kansas law requires us to hold a public hearing on the budget before we adopt it. And the notice of public hearing has to be published and on the street for a period of time before the public hearing can be held, ten days is what sticks in my mind. Many communities have completed, in Kansas, have completed their budget process at this point. The council's gone through whatever workshops they do or if they don't, just kind of depending. They basically think they know where they are, they wrap everything up in a notice of public hearing, they hold the public hearing. And then at that point, the council can make any changes they want and then they adopt the budget. We, historically in Topeka, and this hasn't changed this year, find ourselves in a situation where we have to get the notice of public hearing out and on the street well in advance of the point where we've wrapped up the budget. That is an unfortunate consequence for us because state law says that once we publish that notice of public hearing, that the actual expenditure amounts per fund and the actual dollar amounts of ad valorem tax collections cannot increase from the amounts included in the notice of public hearing. What we have presented in this supplement and what you'll see in the council packet for Tuesday night's meeting is a notice of public hearing that includes expenditure amounts by fund and proposed tax collections in dollars by the three funds that collect property taxes that are higher than what we have recommended as part of this budget process. The reason we've done that is very, very simple. We recommend at this point that the council not foreclose any opportunities it has to make adjustments to the budget that it feels are appropriate over the course of the next really kind of three weeks as you're wrapping up this conversation. So I bring this to your attention really for two purposes. One is to just implore you to consider that recommendation, and I hope that you will, and give yourself that flexibility. The other thing is to make sure if you have constituents that are trying to track what the manager's recommended budget is versus that notice of public hearing, if you get a call and say, why is this number so high? Why are you recommending a gigantic property tax increase to say, we've done this because statute requires us to do this, we're simply trying to keep the flexibility? I guess my bottom-line point on all this is the council may absolutely positively reduce those numbers. That is, that is the one right you retain after that notice of public hearing is published, is the number may always go down. And certainly with, with your vote, that, that can be the case. So that, that item is in your packet and you'll see it on the council agenda Tuesday night for action to put that, to get that in the paper, get that published. And then the public hearing would actually be held on that on August the 13th. Speaking of the manager's recommended budget, we've been talking to a number of groups, kind of bringing them information about the budget. As part of that dialogue, we had one member of the chamber suggest that we do a webinar kind of on where we stand and how we got here. We, we used the facility of Channel Four, not really to do a webinar, but to have me spend a little time answering some Q and A about the budget. That's on the website. It was, they actually got it posted last night. Go to the Where's the Money tab from the city's main page and you'll see five or six short videos that focus on the general fund and overview the budget process. The, the last item generally I wanted to talk about before I jump into finance is to talk about budget adjustments to date. On the budget calendar, we had a revenue projection refresh, and we focused on general fund for obvious reasons there. And then unfortunately had yet another, we've not had any really positive budget surprises. We only seem to only have negative ones from the Kansas Police and Fire Service System. Kansas Police and Fire System is the part of Capers that provides pension benefits to swarm police and firefighters. We received notice that the contribution rate that the city makes against the payroll of police and fire is a full 1% of payroll higher than what we had projected in the budget. So we projected a number we thought was going to be safe, their actuaries proved us wrong. That 1% change, a little bit north of 1% change, based upon just scheduled payroll for fiscal 14 is $420,000. We're actually recommending giving us some cushion because both police and fire incur overtime throughout the year and we also pay that 20% total contribution rate on those overtime dollars as well. So unfortunately, I come here today telling you we're, we're $500,000 worse on our general fund budget than we were two weeks ago. The one other item that, that has come out of this process along the way that I just wanted to point out is the transient guest tax committee made a recommendation for a transfer for the, from the transient guest tax to the general fund of $80,000. We had included in our revenue projections a transfer of $200,000, which had been the practice kind of prior to last year. So that's another $120,000 impact as well. So we've, we've talked a lot about a general fund deficit of $5.65 million. Our new number is 6.27 deficit, I'm sorry to say. My last point, kind of generally on these supplements, we've tried dutifully to make sure to track any questions that you've had, both in these sessions and directly with us, and to respond to those. We've listed those items that we continue to work on. If we've missed anything, it is not intentional, we're not ignoring you. It's just that our notes didn't, you know, Chad came up with his wonderful little binder. Your budget guy has a pile of papers. So if we've missed anything, please, please let me know. If it's not on this page today and it hasn't been answered, it unfortunately means that it's been dropped. So please let us know and we'll, we'll get back to whatever that question was right Questions on kind of big picture?
Okay.
All right.
Are there any questions for Mr. White or comments that you would like to make? Councilman Schwartz, Schmidt, sorry. Schwartz, Schmidt.
Do the same thing. What was the catalyst behind raising this 1% higher Capers contribution?
So, great question. We, the city participates in the Capers system both for general employees and for police and fire employees. The KPNF system is a separate actuary unit. And the state's actuaries revise the contribution rate from employers each year based upon how they see what the future obligations of the system are going to be. So they have a, an actuarial model that says, based upon the current, the current needs of the system to pay pension benefits, the prior needs that we have not funded, and the future needs based upon all the folks in the system today and when we expect them to retire and how much we expect them to make when they retire. This is how much we need to fund in order to make these numbers match up at the end of whatever their actuarial period is. Might be 25 years, 30 years, whatever that number is. The items that can change the actuarial rate include changes to benefits. And there was one of those that resulted, that came out of the pension reform of the last year related to police where benefits increased. And investment rates of return have a huge impact on the forward-looking actuarial rate. And actuaries make things much more complicated because it's not just how you did last year. They typically smooth the value of those, those investment gains over a number of years to try and keep the rate from jumping from year to year. So even, even though last year was probably a pretty strong year for KPNF in terms of investment returns, they're still smoothing the relatively bad years of eight, nine, and 10 likely. And again, I'm, I'm speculating because I haven't, I haven't read their plan design in a number of years. But we are really at the complete mercy of the actuaries, their calculations, and the trustees of that system who make these decisions. But I think it's important to remember that when we talk about what it costs to fund public safety positions, that the Capers, either the KPNF contribution alone is 20% of payroll. It's 20% of payroll. So it's a big chunk to pay for those post-employment benefits.
Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You just explained to us that we went from a 5.6 to a 6.2. And if memory serves me right, every time that we have an effect on our general fund, our bond rating decreases. With, with this new situation of us finding out that we're going to decrease a little bit more, do you foresee any further impact on our bond rating?
Well, this, this would be an impact for the 14 budget. So presuming we fix the problem-
Okay.
-either by raising revenues, cutting expenses, or a mix of both, then I think we'll be able to preserve our rating. If we continue to draw down cash, I would expect future detriment to our bond rating.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Comments?
Madam Chairman, I'll put my finance director hat on for a second. We're starting on page 40 in your books. I did want to give a brief overview of the finance department. Finance really is the lead city agency charged with the stewardship of the public's financial resources that, that we manage and control. Our primary customers are actually other city departments. And as a result, we really don't have a whole lot of control over our workload that's really dictated to us by, by our customers. And just to kind of give you a sense, finance is about 2.5% of the general fund. In fact, if you exclude municipal court and IT today, the rest of the departments on the list today are, I don't know, around 4% of the general fund total. So we're, we're spending our day on really a small sliver of that. Eight out of every $10 that finance spends goes to salary and benefits. Just like the other internal service providers you're going to hear from today, we're primarily people. And we're primarily people with, with pretty specific expertise. Finance also has a relatively large contractual services item line, which you'll see there on the summary page on page 42. And there are some key items that finance pays for on behalf of the city as a whole. We spend about $150,000 a year on software licenses related to finance-specific software, the Lawson system you hear about, there's some other specialized systems that help us do things like prepare the audit and those kinds of things. We have budgeted for next year, our contract for external auditor is up. We actually have an RFP on the street, I believe it hit the city's website in the last few days. Finance Department pays that fee, we budgeted $70,000 in the next year to pay for those services. Banking services, all of you who operate businesses know, there may be free checking for individuals, but there's not for businesses. We pay about $59,000 a year in bank service fees. And then we have some smaller items that show up you wouldn't even think about, about $12,000 or $13,000 a year in armored car fees. You know, so finance has a number of contractual services that we're really obligated to provide that really take the kind of discretionary part, the paperclips and those kinds of things, pieces of the budget, to a pretty small component. The largest change in our budget from 13 to 14 is the inclusion of a budget manager position. That is a, a new FTE. Over the years, finance has, over periods of time, merged and consolidated the leadership positions in finance between the finance director, the city controller, and the budget position. There used to be one of each. Along the way, finance was merged with budget with Jim Langford because he had that budget expertise. And this year, we've consolidated controller and treasurer. But the budget recommendation you see before you restores a full-time budget person to the city. I started my career in, in city government in 1990 in municipal budget. It's something I care very passionately about. I can't think of another community this size that does not have a full-time employee focused on managing this process, preparing the budget, tracking it throughout the year. And many of the challenges frankly that you folks have faced in budget surprises and those kinds of things over the last couple of years, I think stem from the lack of a person really focused on managing what really is an overwhelming task. We've been doing budget by committee. And when you do budget by committee, unfortunately, things do fall through the cracks. So I want to talk about the, break finance down into pieces for you so you can understand what the 24 FTEs involved do. So the first one is financial reporting. The financial reporting category includes the finance director, the budget manager, and accounting manager positions. And this group is primarily responsible for the typical kind of accounting and reporting type functions that you think about. So when you see the city's annual audit, it's this group that's preparing that. With the budget manager position next year, when you get your, your fiscal 15 recommended budget, it would be the budget manager presenting that. The, interestingly to me, the auditors recommend that the city do monthly reconciliation of every city account. There's 500 accounts. So if you just do the math, that would be 23 reconciliations per workday. I reconcile my checking account once about every seven years, whether it needs it or not. I mean, you can, just from that one little statistic, you can see the level of effort that's required just to kind of keep the wheels on the bus related to keeping our transparency and the quality of our financial reporting up. I will tell you that one of the, one of our tasks is to assess the, kind of the organizational capacity and where we're going. I think we, we need some additional resources in this area. It's hard to ask for in a time where we've got, you know, budget challenges. The next item down, the next group is payroll. And we have seven FTEs dedicated to payroll. It sounds pretty staggering. It still does to me as we think about it. But one thing I'd like you to keep in mind is that we effectively run payroll for eight different companies every two weeks. We have seven, seven bargaining units with dramatically different work rules and pay practices and what things we call pay codes, different ways that people get paid for things. And then we have the non-union group on top of that. The payroll process is incredibly time-intensive. One of the things that we're implementing, and Jackie talked about this a little bit, is this, this system called Intelletime, which you may have heard about, which is a time and attendance system. shorthand, we're basically trying to move folks from paper time cards to electronic time tracking. And by doing that, we really try and cut out a whole bunch of process. We try and improve accuracy, which reduces rework. My very, very strong hope is that when we get that process fully implemented, that this number in payroll can be reduced because we'll be that much more efficient. Unfortunately, until we get there, it's actually more work than what we started with. Because as we implement this, nothing makes folks more unhappy than, than a messed-up paycheck. And a messed-up paycheck not only impacts the employee, but it potentially has consequences for things like payment of employment taxes and those types of items. So as we're implementing Intelletime department by department, we're actually running the payroll using the Intelletime information, and we're running it using the old system and matching up to make sure as we implement that everything is going right. So it really kind of doubles the effort as we go through that process with the idea that long-term, this will be more standard and more effective. Chad talked about his, his wishes on labor negotiations, that, that finance would help them on the number side, and that's an area I absolutely agree on. The flip side of that is every time we do something odd and unique in our labor negotiation process, where we're paying things a little differently, or we're adding a little benefit or a different way to track time, that actually costs payroll, this payroll effort, more time, more expense, more cost, because we've got to do something unique, we're not doing other places. I had a very stunning conversation with the finance director in the city of Olahtha, which is about the same size in terms of community size, in terms of employee count. They have no labor unions, so they, they do payroll for one company every year. They have one person running their payroll, one. We have seven. So that gives you a, a pretty strong sense. And I, and I can tell you that my perception with seven was too many when I walked in the door. I'm not- I'm not sure how they get this done every two weeks based upon the resources we have today. So I do not think we are anything but thin in that area at this point. The next item down is Purchasing. Purchasing is responsible really for making, primarily to make sure that we have transparency and fairness in the way that the city purchases goods, services, and commodities throughout the organization. Purchasing touches every city department. One very gratifying thing to me, as we have dialogued with departments about process, about what can we do better, about how they look at Finance, I only hear glowing things about purchasing. So I really have nothing but great things to say about that organization. They do an outstanding job. They really do run like a well-oiled machine. One of the things that purchasing does on behalf of the other internal service providers, especially in City Hall, is they provide departmental purchasing services to other departments in City Hall, as well as being kind of the purchasing agents for the city. So we've got some cost and time sharing. The next area is Treasury. Treasury does really two things. It manages the cash handling throughout the city, which is obviously very, very important, and it invests city funds. When we take all the city's funds and we line them up, the city ended, at the end of 2012, just a snapshot, had more than $90 million in the bank. And we have, in Kansas, relatively limited investment statutes that allow us to invest those funds. I'm really gratified to say that we have completely revamped the way that the city does its investments. We're starting to see the benefit of those returns as we get that portfolio implemented. Keep in mind, interest rates haven't changed at all at the short end. We can invest basically inside of two years only. Interest rates today are about the same as they were a year ago. General Fund in 2012 generated less than $20,000 in investment income. Now, keep in mind, General Fund is only one part of that $90 million. It's a relatively small part. We're projecting for '14 to get that up to $150,000.
That's gross.
And that is not, that is really not taking additional risk. It's really being smarter about how we allocate the total cash balances among what we need today, what we need next week, what we need next month, what we might not even touch during the course of the fiscal year on a pooled cash basis. And then using that range of investments that's permitted to us by statute, which is all very, very conservative, to get the best return. And then the final component we call Business Operations. And this is the stuff that every organization has to do. You have to have somebody to take money when it comes in the door, and you have to have stuff to pay vendors to get money out the door. So these are accounts payable, accounts receivable. Besides that, these folks also manage certain things like the city's cell phone plan, tracking that information, those kinds of things. So that's really the breakdown of where those 24 people spend their time every day. And while there's overlap between those functions, we really do have a number of discreet kind of business units operating in the department. So our share of the reductions for next year would total north of $150,000. The two primary ways we would suggest getting there if we needed to would be to cut the Budget Manager position, which I just advocated for keeping. The primary reason for that, just to be perfectly straight, is it's not filled. And we have a system that is not perfect today, budget by committee. We can certainly limp along and do that in the future. And I think I would rather do that before we took capacity out of one of these other areas, a number of which really, really need the resources. Certainly, they need the resources they have, and they could use extra ones. If we had to go deeper than that, then the next item would be to cut one additional FTE. You'll notice I hedged in the presentation. I said we would take that either from payroll or from purchasing. I do believe that we will have capacity in payroll. I would love to shift that capacity, the Financial Reporting, to improve the timeliness and the quality of Financial Reporting. But if a position had to go, my hope is that by implementing this Intelltime system, that we create the capacity to reduce that position. However, again, we have no choice but to cut paychecks every two weeks. And if the Intelltime implementation takes longer, or we really don't generate those efficiencies, then we'd have to find that FTE one other place. And as well-oiled and as well-working as purchasing is, we would likely look to purchasing to cut a position in that area. Madam Chairman, that's my general overview of the Finance Department. I would be thrilled to try and address any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Ms. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have to say that knowing the number of accounts that have to be reconciled and seeing that you only have four people in payables and receivables, that's pretty impressive. And further, I wanted just to make a comment that I really do appreciate you addressing. One of my questions in this session, I think it was last session, was what are we doing to make sure that we are maximizing the cash that we have? And you went through a great deal of explanation with me, letting me know that because we are a city, because we are a government, there's very minimal places that we could actually invest our dollars. With a little bit of a background in Finance, one of the things that I was thinking was I-bonds, you know, things that, you know, really could give us great returns on our cash. But we are just strapped. But to hear that we're going from $20,000 in returns to $100,000 in returns is very significant, and I just appreciate that leadership.
Thank you. Any other questions? Karen?
When I first came on now, about five years ago, I guess, we supported implementation of the Lawson software, which you talked about for a moment. And one of, I, there were a number of elements of Lawson that were supposed to automate and give us both better services and not require as much staff. One, I thought, was the capacity to do reconciliations.
Yeah.
Can you address?
Sure. Tina, do you want to, do you want to talk about Lawson and reconciliation, the components of that?
In terms of, I don't believe, but I'll have to check. I wasn't on that committee explaining that, but I don't recall that it was to reconcile accounts. But I'll check into that for you.
Okay. Because Jeff made reference to the monthly reconciliation, which of course is a challenge with that many moving parts. But I thought that that was one of the elements that, at least when it was fully implemented, that Lawson had the capacity to help us do.
And every-
And there are some wonderful automated-
Every good accounting system will, and hopefully get us to a point where we're managing exceptions only. But, I mean, you know from reconciling your-
We've still got to oversee.
It's a very manual process, absolutely.
I just wanted to check on that. And further, you were talking about purchasing. And Lawson, if I recall correctly, was to help us go paperless with a lot of that process. Is that fully mature at this point?
Yeah, I will tell you that purchasing has absolutely embraced the kind of e-purchasing bandwagon and all the tools that are available in Lawson. And purchasing as a unit has really shrunk over time as they've implemented these technologies which help them move from paper to electronic. So they're doing really, really terrific things on the purchasing side with electronic implementation.
And payables and receivables as well?
Absolutely. And we are seeing, we are definitely seeing the return on the Lawson investment. And really, the prima facie evidence of that I have this year is the fact we were able to get the audit done on time. I mean, we didn't increase staff to get the audit done, but we had hoped to see, as we moved fully from HTE to Lawson, that that wrap-up process that we do at the end of the year would be easier. And it was this year than it was last year. So we really are seeing the benefits of that, of that system. We're, what, maybe in year two of kind of full implementation of that? And we're continuing to find ways to leverage that technology every single day.
I appreciate that. One last question, if I may?
You talked about payroll and using Intelltime and getting that much more automated. And you talked about us having seven staff right now, and that there was another city that had just one. Where do you expect us to be, what, right now, as you see it, where would we be looking at? Being in terms of, it sounds like at least a year out, but the number of employees that we would need when this system's fully up?
I can't answer that yet.
Okay.
I think we're, part of our job, kind of putting my consultant hat on, is to help figure out what the department ought to look like when it grows up. And one area we're really focused on right now is payroll, and it's a multi-headed Hydra. We can't process payroll every week without, or every two weeks, without substantial help from IT, without involvement from HR. It's really a complex process. And so we have an ongoing dialogue with all of those kind of stakeholders in that process to say, where are the opportunities for improvement? And frankly, some of those opportunities are going to be easy to identify and hard to implement because they require changes to contracts. And so, you know, we've got to, some of that's going to be a long-term plan where we sit down at the bargaining table and say, "Look, folks, we need some help from you to make us more effective." And, you know, those things can be challenging. Some of them may be easy, but others may be, we're not going to do, we'd like not to do pay this way anymore for this particular circumstance.
Appreciate that. Thank you. City Manager, did you have a comment?
I didn't. I just really wanted to hit on the point that Jeff closed with, is that that is a very comprehensive discussion, that it's more than just the software. It's the ability to deal with contracts and everything else that goes with that.
That's good to know. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. In 2010, when we had to have, make about 40 positions, eliminate about 40 positions due to the decreased revenue from the recession, I believe we eliminated two positions in Finance. And at the time, it was questioned whether we were cutting too deeply. And then I believe a year later, Finance requested, and the consensus was, yes, we did. And then a year later, requested an additional position, which the Council did not approve. So I know we always want to do more with the less. But I believe this is one department that we have to fund appropriately because we have to have good numbers. We have to have credibility in what Finance is doing. It's the basis of our, of a government or any unit. So this is one, I believe. And I also, in reading the audits, the numerous audits this year, a number of them pointed out, or they questioned if the city had sufficient staff to do the duties that it needed to do. So here is something that I think is, we have to look at and provide the appropriate staff to do what we expect so that we have good numbers. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next on deck would be IT. Mark, you're up to bat. And if you, council members, remember, if you have any questions, you can email them to the City Manager or to Mr. White. You know, sometimes you get home or driving home, you think, "Oh, I should ask that question." Don't hesitate to do that. It's very important we get all questions and concerns answered to try to eliminate them on the evening of Budget Night.
Thank you, Madam-
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. From the New Council Members, my name is Mark Biswell. I'm the IT Director and the Chief Information Security Officer. I'd also like to take the opportunity to introduce Sherry Skeneover. She's our IT Deputy Director and Chief Software Officer. And we're both honored here to be here today to discuss the 2014 budget. I'd like to start out by first just looking at the pie chart for the IT budget. The proposed 24 IT budget is $3,419,032. The pie chart found shows that the IT budget breakdown is 30% for wages, 9% for benefits, 49% for contractual, four for commodities, and 8% for other. So I think what's important to understand is that we do a really good job of trying to keep our employee costs down so that we can at least put 50% of that towards IT technology investments. There's three major programs that make up the IT Department. The first is the IT Telecommunications Program. The second is the IT Computing Program. And the third is the IT Business System Program. And I'd just like to highlight some of the services provided by each program. The first program that I'm very proud of is our outside plant fiber optic system. This system supports about 85 miles of private outside fiber optic plant that's owned by the city. The system connects 47 city facilities, 20 county facilities, and one state-of-Kansas facility. And we also interconnect 125 traffic signals. So very proud of the system. And we have one FTE that supports the system. We've got other various services under IT Telecommunications, which include our structured cabling service. That would be wiring the building for network connectivity between computers and network switches. We do also have some leased telecommunications circuits that we still fund that's necessary to connect some of our telephone systems back to the AT&amp;T Central Office. As far as the telephone system service goes, we have two Norotelavia PBX phone switches, one's located here at City Hall, the second at the Law Enforcement Center. These are full-featured systems that support fax machines, credit card, voice messaging, automated call distribution, call center functionality, and support approximately 1,070 telephone sets. Both of these systems process approximately 60,000 calls per month. And we have one FTE that's allocated to the telephone system service. So to summarize, the IT Telecommunications Program, we've got two FTEs allocated. And the 2014 proposed budget's $574,680. The second program I'd like to highlight is our IT Computing Program. This program consists of our data networking services. We have approximately 110 high-speed gigabit network switches across the city that's located in 47 of those facilities. They're interconnected via our fiber optic cable. We have two enterprise-class storage area network systems, which, where we store and perform our mass data storage, two disk-to-disk backup systems, and a handful of network appliances. There's two FTEs allocated to this position. One would be a network engineer, and the second would be a network system admin. The next service under IT Computing would be our PC Support and Help Desk Service. This is where we provision and maintain our PCs, laptops, and mobile computing devices. We're currently on a four-year refresh cycle. We lease our PCs, turn them over every four years. The advantage of this is, is that if you don't turn your PCs over and you own them, as time goes on, they start to break down, and your repair part costs go up, and also your service desk calls escalate. So it's good practice to turn those PCs over about every four years. And we have approximately 1,000 PCs. Our service desk personnel, we have two FTEs allocated for service desk. They support about 1,000 end-users. We run between 2,800 and 3,000 support calls per year. So as far as the PC Support and Help Desk Service, we've got three FTEs allocated to this service. The next service is our Service System Service. We support about 75 servers. Out of these 75 servers, 70% are virtualized so that we have our own private cloud. We've been virtualized for many, many years, and pretty proud of that. So the two FTEs mentioned for the data networking service also are responsible for our Server System Service. And of course, the last service that's under IT Computing is the IT Security Service. This consists of provisioning, engineering, system administration, and support of security appliances, endpoint malware protection, and all of our favorite subjects, spam filtering and content filtering. And there's one FTE allocated to this position. So to summarize, the IT Computing Program, there are six FTEs allocated. And the total 2014 proposed budget is $1,610,282. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sherry Skeneover to discuss the IT Business Systems.
Thank you, Mark. Before I give you a brief description about the Business Systems, if it's okay with you, I'm going to answer a few questions that came up a little bit earlier. The e-ticketing. The initial investigation that we have done several years ago, the ticketing cost- cost would be somewhere approximately between 150 and $300,000. It all depending on the number of devices. One of the things that we should investigate is to piggyback on the state of contract because the highway patrol actually uses this. Prices probably has changed, but that was the initial quotes in information that we have received. So, that's probably your price point on that. Councilwoman Hiller, you had questions about the lost implementation on the ROI, on the reconciliation. As the initial plan was the water payments should have routed through. Unfortunately, a few years ago, the upgrade for the utility billing was turned down by council. The application that is currently being used is still old. Integration at that point is not possible. So, all of those transfers are still done manually, plus the processes, the way the cash is being handled, still requires a lot of people. On the purchasing side, the strategic sourcing, Jay uses the online bid substantially. Initially, it would take him approximately four to six hours to put a bid on the street. Now, it takes about thirty minutes. To kind of piggyback on what Jeff was saying about the intel time, we are actually the implementer. We're the ones that actually do the configuration. We have seen of how many union contract requirements are there and what payroll has to go through. That's actually one of the roles we do. We implement software, and we change as business processes if possible. One contract alone, the definition of a day is described seventeen different ways. So, you can just imagine of how many rules that we have to go through. I mean, we have hundreds and hundreds of configurations that we have to put in the system. So, just to kind of address, I hope that was okay.
And if you could follow through with an email with that, with those questions, those answers, the questions and the answers for the council members that are not here?
Sure. I hope that was okay. But I kind of had the answers, so I kind of figured I better give it to you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sherri.
I would have stopped. You're laughing. The seventeen times per day. It is reality. And it's scary of what we actually see. Business Systems actually has four elements. We are a backend maintenance and support of all of the enterprise applications that we currently have, full court, full case, document imaging. We do user security, license management, issue resolution, training. So, we maintain all of the applications that are currently running, enterprise-wise and department-specific. The other element is application implementation. We usually cooperate and consolidate with departments of what their needs are. We define the solutions for it. We work through specifications. We assist with the RFP process. We are the technical implementer on all of these applications, but we also project managers. We normally handle all of the management of the project, including risk analysis, including life cycles, financials, all the way through. And these projects are, you know, anything from an upgrade, like Judge mentioned on his full court, to a CRM application, what is citywide, to intel time. So, they are small project, or they are very, very large, large projects that we deal with. The other side is that we also are providing assistance and information on business intelligence and process improvement. We build all of the queries. We build reports, standardized, trying to put dashboards together, workflows, to make it easier and better for our customers, what is the city employees, you know, to come up with a consistent message. We use raw data, manage it, manipulate it, provide it as requested, and then come up with trying to have a standard so we don't have to redo the same thing all over again. It's challenging because the information comes from a variety of different sources. It's all not in the same format. You know, some of the data is twenty years old, and it's sitting on any of those 100 system. And some of it is in Lawson, but it's kind of a lot easier to extract. We usually work with the departments, trying to define, is there a better way to process? What can we do to assist? How can we automate? You know, this is actually where specialty is. The other area is that we also are web developers, and we maintain and develop our websites, internal and external. We handle the payment process for the payment portals that are online, what usually processes approximately $5 million per year. Any questions?
Are there any questions or concerns for IT? Michelle?
What is your training budget allocation? Because in IT, training is imperative because it changes every single day.
We're looking at about 20,000 is our allocation for IT training, and we heavily utilize that.
I'm sorry?
It's 20,000, and we heavily utilize that fund to ensure that our employees are up to speed with the changing technology. Madam Chairman, before we close out, I'd like to just take a few minutes to discuss what the IT proposed cut for 2014 is. I'd like to escape, but I don't think it would be appropriate. So, I'd like to have just a bit of a discussion about that.
Sure, absolutely. If it's on a certain page, if you'll let us know that.
It's at the bottom of the IT breakout.
Seventy-one, seventy-one dash one.
Page seventy-one.
Thank you. That's helpful to me. I don't know about the other people, but it's helpful to me.
I appreciate that. Basically, what we're proposing is, is that we have an annual contract with Microsoft to provide Microsoft technology in the form of desktop operating systems, the Office Suite, several other items that are very critical to our IT operation. We think we may have the opportunity in 2014 to perhaps negotiate with Microsoft to defer that payment. And what we'd like to do, because the ERP system lease matures in 2014, would be to defer that payment with Microsoft and double up on that payment in 2015. I understand that we're looking for persistent cuts, something that's going to get us, as Jeff's mentioned, you know, online in terms of a sustainable budget. But we think that this is an opportunity that we can pursue to assist in that 2014 budget hit. And it seems, as Jeff mentioned, each day we get more and more worse information in terms of where we're headed with the overall cuts we're looking at. So, that would be our primary proposal for our 2014 IT budget cut. And again, that figures 194,300.
Well, Mark, let me ask you this. Will we have any type of penalty that we would have to pay if we done, if we do that?
I don't believe so. We've had some preliminary discussion with Microsoft already. Their contract, our contract comes due in June. Prior to the contract come and do this year, we had some discussion about the possibility of deferring that payment this year. They seem to be receptive of that. I don't, they didn't mention any penalties. I think that if we negotiate with them to double up on payments in fiscal year 2015, that we would be okay.
Okay. Are you through?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Karen?
At one point, there was an active project going to automate taking animal control license payments online, so that it would both be easier for citizens and also set us up to substantially increase our revenue. Where's that project?
I think after the initial evaluation, the cost, it was just a little bit too expensive. We would have to build this internally to kind of put online capabilities on there. We would have to investigate how much time and effort would be if we actually do it in-house versus purchasing an application. I do not believe in custom development because usually they are very, very difficult to maintain. So, I'm, you know, I prefer everything to be standard as possible.
Have we looked for, I would think, software like that would be out there?
It probably is. I have not, we have not looked at it. We have not received on a request to look at it again. We have currently have eleven active projects, and some of them are, you know, very, very time-consuming, especially the time and attendance scheduling is keeping, kept, keeping everybody busy. But we have not received additional requests from, you know, the animal side to kind of take a look at it again. So, we can put it in a list and kind of check with them.
Just checking, because that was, I know we hammered it for a while in terms of the processing fees, and discovered that both for the police departments, the various fees that they had, for records and things like that, and for the licensing, that the processing fees were far less than people had thought at first. And then, I didn't hear anything about it. So, I was just checking, and thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Neitz?
About your server farm being seventy-five, or seventy percent virtualized right now? Are there still a lot of options for increasing that? I mean, I know that can get dramatic savings in disaster recovery and backup and all.
Yes, we're current, yes, not to interrupt you, but we're currently in the process of virtualizing probably maybe eight to nine more servers. With server virtualization, not every server's a good candidate for virtualization. I think we can get our numbers up to close to eighty percent in terms of total number of servers virtualized. And as you know, there's other advantages to virtualization. You can move servers from server to server for disaster recovery purposes. And so, I think by the time we're done, we'll probably have about eighty, eighty-five percent virtualized. So, and again, we've, we jumped on the virtualization bandwagon years ago. I think you'll find this IT department to be very aggressive in terms of adoption of technology. And not to take up a lot of time, but if I could just share a short story with you. We looked at designing our fiber optic system back in early 2000. The reason I keep mentioning this system is because it saved us probably half a million dollars a year in leased telecommunication costs. And I personally designed that system and took a little bit of a chance of putting it on a map and taking it up to the mayor. And as I walked in the door, I noticed a young gentleman sitting outside the door. And I rolled the plan out on the mayor's desk, and the mayor said, yeah, it looks great. How much is it going to cost? I said, 250,000. And she said, sorry, Mark, I don't know where we're going to get that money. And the young man stuck his head in the door and says, I know where it's at. And that young man's Jeff White. So, I'd like to publicly thank Jeff White for his efforts on that fiber optic system. And he's still young, by the way.
So, he gave you 250,000?
No, he found it.
Karen?
I had a quick question related to that. Is the county contributing to the 20 locations that you mentioned that we have been hooked up on that fiber optic system?
Where we're at with county is, we've worked very collaborative together to share technology. I think most of you know, many years ago, or it seems like many years ago, there's a big push to consolidate. And the two IT departments got together and had discussion that collaboration's really the way to go. You know, if the governing bodies decide to consolidate, fine, but we're not going to wait around. We're going to start sharing services. So, we are providing them their telecommunications circuits. Now, the county administrates the public safety system because we have a joint law enforcement center. And so, for what they're saving in terms of telecommunications costs per year, and what we're gaining from them performing system administration on our public safety system is really kind of a wash. So, that's, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
I'll email it to you.
Any other, okay. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I would like the executive to get in the chair. You're up to bat. And we're going to take a five-minute break. We are more than halfway through. So, I will be back in five minutes, and we will start in five minutes.
Got you. We'll do it.
This is on even though it doesn't look like it's on, right?
All right. City Manager, if you could tell me what page we're on, and let's get started.
Thirty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
City Manager designee. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, the Executive Department consists of four primary activities. Number one is the administration, which includes the resident liaison, neighborhood support program, then also the city clerk's office, communications, and the internal auditor. Our total budget is 1.367 million dollars. So, 1,367, 177. That is primarily for wages, a total of 773,000 in wages and 224,000 in benefits. We have a total of 11.5 FTEs. What I, what I like to do is just identify the primary differences that exist between the 2013 and 2014 budget, because I think it notes reference. The, there really isn't any significant change from a overall financial perspective, but because of the way the numbers have specifically played out. In 2013, the wages portion of the, of the Executive Department appears to have changed from 520,000 to, 520,000 to a total of 772,000. So, a total increase of 252,000, which I think certainly sends the wrong message at a, at a time that we're, we're looking to cut budget. But that's primarily made up of two specific activities. Number one is at the time of the hire of the new city manager, there was an increase in the salary and the benefits that occurred there. There also was a transition of some people in the Executive Department from HND. We had a split position of HND in the Executive Department. We took on some more of those responsibilities during 2013, as opposed to paying fifty percent of those costs. We had a hundred percent of those costs. And in addition to that, and I'll have it explained in a little bit more detail, but we transitioned the Channel Four and the Communications Department from IT into the, into the city manager's office. And while that showed as a general fund increase in city manager's office, it was, it was offset elsewhere in the budget. So, there was no real net increase between the revised 2013 budget and the, and the 2014 budget, other than those which are true across the entire organization. The, the primary functions of the, of the city, city manager's office, number one is the Executive Department, which is made up of four FTEs. We are primarily looking at strategic leadership of the organization, providing the support to the departments and the divisions throughout the organization, and managing, providing oversight of all finance and budget activities. And I think really mostly, most important, and one that's closest to all of us, is we've worked very closely with the mayor and certainly Ginny in the city council office to make sure that we provided a very high level and responsiveness in resident liaisons, neighborhood partnership activities. So, we've worked with the city manager, the city manager's office has worked with the city council office, the mayor, code, planning, police department, development services. Whenever any sort of activity occurred at the neighborhood level, we were, I think, very responsive. In fact, I know that we've been very responsive. And so, that's gone very well. In terms of, what I'd like to do is rotate through. I had Sean sit up here only because she had a historical basis of the 2013 budget. And if there were any specific questions pertaining to the administrative side, I wanted to provide an opportunity to her to answer questions. What I'm going to do in the next couple of minutes is I'm going to have Brenda Younger, the city clerk, come up and just give a little bit of overview of what's happening in the city clerk's office. And then also have Susie Gilbert come up very briefly and talk about some of the initiatives and budget impacts on the, the communications department. So, department. So at that point, I'd like to finish my general comments about the administrative side and ask if you have any questions from a financial perspective that Sean might be able to address.
Are there any questions or concerns regarding the city manager's office with Sean or Karen?
Just a quick one. I, and I had asked this, this is one of Jeff's black hole questions. I was hoping to have it beforehand. Could you please just tie the numbers here to the org chart? So I, the positions, I've got the four point five FTEs for communication and the three FTEs for the city clerk. Who are the, who are the other four then?
The four would be the city manager, myself, the assistant to the city manager, Monique LaDai, who's the resident liaison, and then we have a vacant position, which was the deputy city manager position. When we transferred those positions in thirteen, we still have that vacant position.
Where, where does the internal auditor fit then in the count?
He does not. That is a contracted position with USD 501 to Pika Public Schools. And so it is not a benefit-eligible position with the city. 501 pays his benefits. We just contract that and pay that contract amount out through the contractual services.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any questions or concerns? If not, we'll move on to city clerk's office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
As you know, the city clerk's office has three full-time positions. The total budget is two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We have two functions that we mainly provide services for. The first is administrative support, which is your internal services. That encompasses like recording, transcribing, distribution of city council meeting minutes, work sessions and special meetings. We record and receive zoning petitions. We process special assessments. We process and record needs and easements, distribute contracts, maintain the city code book, and all other government records. We also administer the city's record retention policy and schedule, and we post all open meeting legal notices. We are also required to attend and record minutes for the Joint Economic Development Board meetings in odd-numbered years. The second function that we provide is customer service, and that's going to be our external services. Basically, again, that covers all of your official city records for staff and citizens. We coordinate citizen public comment for council meetings. We process claims. We issue business license and special event licenses. We provide regular customer service for all departments in city hall, and we provide staffing assistance to the city manager, mayor, and city council offices as needed. So.
And you also serve as backup to the city council?
Yes, we do.
When Ginny and Amber are on vacation, sick or other. And that is much appreciated.
Thank you. Yes. Probably, there's not much change in the budget from 2013 to 2014. The biggest change you will note is in the elections and the contractual services. Last year, you'll note, there was a line item for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. This year, it is less because we do not have an election to pay for in 2014. So that's, that's your biggest fluctuation you'll see in the city clerk's budget. In 2014, we are going to move to city works. That project will be encompass some extra work on our part, but that will bring us into, to all, across-the-board city licensees will all be on city works, will all be connected. Right now, we're on a class system. It works, but it's very old and it's outdated. And so IT supports city works. We'll have help from IT and also Lee Allen and Public Works to help us implement that. So if there's any questions?
I was just curious, do you need any more resources to implement Public Works in your department?
No, we have that covered. We're, we're good at this time. So.
Any other questions for the city clerk's office? Comments? Thank you, Brenda?
Thank you.
City communications?
Hello. I'm Susie Gilbert, communications and marketing director. I, first of all, city communications, we do internal and external communications for the city, including our media relations, our city four, our meeting broadcasts, including this meeting, which is online, which is something we've just started doing, streaming meetings online when we can't go live from different buildings. And we do our creative marketing services, our videos and those webcasts that you can hopefully refer your constituents to if they have any budget questions on the budget page. So this is the fourteen is, well, thirteen, we got separated out from IT. And then fourteen is kind of the first year we're under the city manager's budget, but we kind of have our own budget to work with. So not that IT didn't, didn't take care of communications, but it's kind of interesting because we don't really have the three-year history of numbers, because they were kind of all merged together with IT. So, so that's something that's interesting. Our communications budget is three hundred and eighty thou, proposed budget, three hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. We have four point five FTEs in communications. And seventy-two percent of the budget goes to wages and, and benefits. We've done a few things well that I wanted to mention. We've increased communication between the city and residents. We have started, like as I mentioned, live streaming meetings online. We did the neighborhood summits online. We did, we're doing these meetings online. It's something we've never done before, and I've heard from people who, who appreciate that. When we're, we're still try, like, we're laying the infrastructure for the Holiday Building so we can go live from the Holiday Building. And we think next month will be the first time we'll be able to do that. But in lieu of going live from these buildings, we want to at least be live online. And we have put your, your meetings, your city council meetings and committee meetings online. So hopefully you've noticed you can refer your, your constituents, or go back and just watch yourself online anytime, on demand. So our budget is basically the same as last year. And we have kind of one line item point that I wanted to hit. We do have money budgeted in our commodities for equipment upgrades. Our systems are aging. I mean, they're thirteen, fourteen years old, a lot of our systems. And I've heard from some of you that our signal on Cox isn't as great as you'd like it to be, and I would like it to be. So we have some plans. We want to make a fiber connection straight to Cox. We have an analog signal that we're sending them now. We want to send them a digital signal. I think it'll look a lot better. And so we're going to hopefully use the money in our budget to go toward that. Some, some upgrades to your council chamber system. You need, you guys really need new cameras in there. And audio, we need to work on our audio. So we need a new audio switcher. So those are the things we have planned.
And that's in there?
It is. It's in our budget, our proposed budget.
If I could just kind of comment on that, certainly, there's a lot of concern amongst council members, but also many of the citizens. And, and it's turned into a, an opportunity for people to, you know, make comments that we're not committed to transparency. And certainly, that's not the case. We all, we all know that. But we have to continue to push forward on this. And if somebody can't hear the, the audio during a meeting, or if they can't see the video very well, it's incumbent upon us to change. We've actually been looking at this. We do have, we're, we're an analog, we're analog people living in a, in a digital world. And, and that's a very tough position to be from. Given the fact that, that you can easily spend a lot of money, we wanted to make sure that we'd looked at this in the most thoughtful manner possible, have engaged the people from Cox and others, and are ready to really roll forward with this. So we, we have the money in the budget. We feel confident that we now have a good understanding as to how to proceed. And you'll see, you'll see those changes very quickly. And I, and that will, I believe, bring some level of comfort with your constituents.
We want to make it a seamless improvement. So we, we maybe don't even want you to notice. But, and I did wanted to tell you, Councilwoman Hiller, I noticed you gave me, you gave me a look when you saw some flickering lights in council chambers. That's also on our list. We're going to rebuild those lights in chambers.
That, I, I will just wrap up this presentation on the executive department, that we've identified some funding reductions. Brenda made reference to reduction in contracted services of twenty-one thousand dollars. In addition to that, we, we made reference to the deputy city manager position. We've identified forty-eight thousand dollars of reduction from that amount that we can put to the reductions. The question that should be on your mind is, we've had a lot of conversations about the neighborhood, neighborhood partnership officer, somebody working with the neighborhoods and code and everything. We believe that we still have the capability with the FTE and the remaining budget to fill that position and going forward. That concludes our presentation.
All righty. Are there any questions or questions, concerns, comments? You know, I, I believe in transparency, and I, I've voted for transparency. But I don't want to get caught up in, because we're, you know, and I, I know people say it. The bottom line is, all of our equipment is old and outdated. So it's not that about transparency. It's about being replaced in money. So when they, they say that to you, we need to educate them and let them know that, you know. I was in Wichita, and our channel looks very, very good compared to theirs. It's fuzzy. You can't even see it, you know. So I, I just think we get too much caught up in what people are saying about transparency. And I really don't care about that. What I care about is getting the, the proper equipment and being able to afford it. Because since 2005, it's, it's been terrible. Our microphones are terrible over there, you know. So it's this and that. And I think Ronaldo and them do a good job of trying to piece together. I know we had a camera that we thought went down or went down, and they pieced that together. And so that's where I'm at on that. But I do have a question. You know, I get a lot of people that, I, I know we signed a contract with Cox. I, I just don't understand why we have to sign one contract, because I get a lot of people that are on DirecTV that they, they, they're like, well, we would watch you, but we can't because you're not on DirecTV.
Right. And we're.
Or digital, yeah. Or Dish. Yeah. So, so my question is, I don't, I, I just don't understand why they both can't have it. It's, and I know when you sign that contract, you sign it to go with that particular person. And then how do we do that? Does that go up for bid? RFP? I mean, how, because I get that question all the time.
So we're on Cox and U-verse. So it's not exclusive. It's not that we can only have Cox and not, it's Dish Network, right? Dish Network. So that's definitely on the list to explore. They usually, I was talking with Ronaldo about it. They usually don't, or they, they might have a question with carrying a government access channel, because they, they just recently added even local channels. So I, I just have to talk to them about that. I don't have a price figure, but it's not.
And that's fine. Those are just questions that I have, that my constituents have asked, that maybe we need to look into, because there's other people other than, everybody doesn't carry Cox and, and, and look in, into that. Yes?
I, I do have to echo her concerns, because there are a lot of constituents of mine, both in North Topeka and in, in Oakland and on the east side, who can't access, you know, a computer. They don't have a computer at home. They also can't access the city council meetings if they wanted to, because Dish and DirecTV do not carry local government channels. So if we're going to move forward with this, I think it would behoove you to make sure that every single network that we have in our city carries local channel, because that will ultimately get the message out of what we're doing, what we're talking about, and ultimately promote true transparency across the board. So I would like to see what you can propose before we actually get into the budgetary process in August.
Okay. And city manager, you know, I know that because transparency is very big, and again, I'm for that. But we do, the county doesn't give us any money. Am I correct on anything? And we do all of their meetings. And then the JETO meeting is a joint effort meeting. Have we ever thought about maybe asking them, because they're going through their budget process, for some, some money, for some type of funding? I mean, because our employees do that, our, we're paying, we pay for everything. And I just don't know if that's ever been explored or thought of, or?
I have not personally participated in those conversations, but it's certainly with them. It's certainly something that we've talked about internally from, I know that when the question was asked of Mr. Biswell, from an IT perspective, what is the relationship? And, and the fact is that there, we do provide a lot of, lot of free stuff for them, but at the same, in the same time, they do some things for us. So I think we do need to engage in a conversation with them as to what makes sense and how we can build a business model that, you know, fairly shares the, the cost of things.
And that's okay if it's, you know, maybe kind of sort of even, but if we're here and they're here. I mean, we, we've been doing it because their council meetings weren't televised. And maybe if we did have that discussion, they wouldn't want that. But we're, you know, it's, it's, it's not fair that the city taxpayers pay for all that when it, when it benefits both the city and the county.
Deputy Mayor, let me look at that and come back to you with an assessment initially, and then a program to deal with it.
Just food for thought. Appreciate it. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, Karen?
Across the table on that subject, I do hope, moving forward, now that we've kind of got our new team in place, or at least setting templates from the finance side, that when we estimate those costs, I know when we first, there was, there'd been discussion of this subject before, for instance. And, and for instance, if we've got one camera person there shooting an hour and a half meeting, our cost is not fifteen dollars an hour times one and a half. Our fully loaded cost is more, you know, those guys start setting up at eight o'clock in the morning. They go over there at nine and set up on site. They run as long as the meeting goes. They come back. They have to, they have to do some procedures with the film and get it posted afterward. And, and not only that, but our cost for an employee who maybe makes fifteen dollars an hour is really forty or fifty. Just, and so I hope that we're doing what you might call fully loaded costing when we do any of those kinds of things right up front.
Yeah. And, and thank you for that. We do. And, and I think one of the things that we have really tried to do in the last year is, as we do in an assessment, and we make sure that we really understand, not the easy to observe, but the things that are hidden. So thank you.
It's been progressing, and I just appreciate that. I think it's important for us, even internally, looking at what something's really costing us when we do it. So, thank you.
And, and not only that is, I also know that we are still advertising all of the community centers. Well, really, the community centers is parks are, you know, that's, that's all county, which I don't have a problem, you know, with them on Channel Four. I think, I think our constituents are used to them being there. But again, I mean, if we really wanted to say, that's not city, that's not city, that's not city, I mean, you know, that, just some concerns that I have. And it would be beneficial for them, I think.
Yeah. I look forward to the day where we have so much competition for content that we push those things out, which is our goal.
City manager, will you still be around?
That's up to you.
Not funny. Thank you. All right. Let's go with counsel. I have decided to let Ginny take over my duties and do a good job, as she will. Go ahead, Ginny.
Good morning. It will be short. The proposed city council office budget for 2014 is three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven dollars. Personnel costs for nine council members and two support staff, which consists of one full-time and one half-time FTE, account for ninety percent of the budget. A couple of notes on the budget. An increase of fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars is attributed to rising health insurance, capers, and retirement reserves costs. The city manager has included thirteen thousand, five hundred of the materials council line item to cover costs for travel, education, associate, association membership fees, et cetera. And that would be, costed out to one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per council member. And that's all I have at this time. If you have anything for me?
Are there any questions? There's, if you look at our budget, there's really not a whole lot we could cut out. We used to have money in there for food. When new council members came along, we'd have, it was really nice, but we took that out. We're really at our, the bones, the basic bones of, of any budget. But as council members, if there's anything in there that you question or that you would like to see taken out, I think this would be a great time to have a discussion. If not, we thank you, Ginny. We appreciate daily what you do for us. Couldn't do it without you. Most valuable tools sits right in front of us. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And it's okay, I'll make my presentation from here, of course.
Absolutely.
As some would say, this is an important, one of the more important departments in the city. Our fund is under thirty-four thousand, which is by far the smallest department in the city. If we have to achieve our five percent reduction, we will adjust the thermostat and turn off the lights. Other than that, unless you have questions, that is the mayor's budget for this office. Page thirty.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Page twenty-nine is our pie chart. For a hundred and thirty-four thousand, I think it's a good investment and certainly would recommend that it be funded.
Well, and I, I see on here you have, okay, one elected and one full-time employee. Is there any questions for the mayor?
Chair, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Harmon.
So how does the smallest city budget get the largest office?
Well, we're considering, we're considering having other departments come in and use it on a part-time basis.
Legal.
Legal. Also, I should say that the city clerk's office and legal both provide support for us when our, one of our staff cannot be there. So we do get a good support from other departments in the building, as well as, of course, the city manager's office.
Councilman Harmon, some things you just inherited. And that's the way it is. And that's the way it is. Are there any other questions, city manager?
Well, I was just saying that the mayor came into his office one day and I was actually measuring him to get my new stuff in.
And that was the end of that? I, just on a serious note, I think that's, that's always been the mayor's office and I think our constituents look forward to that being there. It provides just a little bit of privacy when you go in and you can sneak out. So traditionally, I think that's what the people look at, that that's the mayor's office. And Larry, I appreciate you. I marvel at Larry. I was leaving a council meeting and I noticed Larry was the last one. He's talking to everybody and yes, and just shaking their hand and, because I'm always the first one to get out of there and I'm like, "Man, he's got to, he's got to do better and sneak out with me." So we appreciate you. Karen?
And I want to credit the mayor and Vicky Buning, as well as the support from the city manager. I go way back with city hall and, you know, we've gone through some years where you had to go through basically a closet to get into the mayor's office. It was embarrassing and awful. And so the commitment to bring it back to where there truly is a foyer that is attractive and professional and looks like it's a gateway to a mayor's office of a fine city, I really appreciate. At the same time, I know that, I think some of the artwork is from the mayor's home. We've been really economizing on bringing in those pictures, old maps of the city and improving it. So thanks for the thriftiness and the good looks of those improvements. They're important.
The only downfall to that, Karen, is you can't pick up a soda on the way to the mayor's office. That's the only downfall.
Oh, wow. Pretty soon, we'll get the coffee pot back so the press just hangs out like they used to.
All righty. That was the mayor's. Any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, our agenda stands for the general fund grant approval process.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll make my introductory comments very brief and just get into the discussion. We've had a lot of very good conversation about how to deal with the general grant, general fund grant program. And the specific recommendation that was made by the city manager was that we focus primarily at this time in this budget process to just identify that total number and include that total number in the budget and then over the next couple of months, implement a very quick but an easy process that allows more accessibility and an, more accessibility to people to apply and also provides an opportunity for some more performance-based assessments. Some comments that were made by Councilmember Hiller and supported by the deputy mayor was that that's a great idea, but it's now the time to do it. And I agree. That's my challenge also. In the specific recommendation made, I identified a sitting body that could, that has familiarity with dealing with the CDBG grants, specifically the CAC, and said, "Maybe we could use them this year and then establish something, something better." Then some other ideas were thrown out. I think at this point, because there are a lot of people that are applicants for these grants and they, and they want to know what the process is, I think as a body, if you can provide direction as to whether we want to go forward with the, just identifying the number and then quickly structuring an organization, I'm sorry, a process that allows you to provide direction, allow them to apply, allow the assessment and recommendation to come back to you in the next two months, or if you say, "We think that's a good idea, but as Councilmember Hiller said, let's do it next year." And at this point, I sit and look forward to direction from you.
Okay. My first question is, how do we come up with the number? The amount of money overall that we're going to give out to?
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. What we did based, the concept of this overall budget was let's, let's really keep things stable. And so we just really brought forward the same number as we had in the previous, previous year. Did we, we didn't apply any sort of reduction. I do not believe that we applied any reduction to that number. It was four hundred...
And that number is...
Four hundred seventy-four thousand.
Four hundred and, well, I'm sorry. Well...
I'm sorry.
It's page one ninety-eight in your books.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what the number is and how we got there. So it's...
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for asking that question. In 2013, the authorized amount was four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. In your book on one ninety-eight, you'll show an actual number of six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That number represents what people ask for.
Right, right.
Our recommendation in the budget is to remain constant for four seventy-nine. I think that the question to you is, do we, do we keep constant or do we apply the same level of cut that we've applied throughout the rest of the organization and then let that divvy up through, through the remaining organization? So that's the first question. What's the amount? Our recommendation is stable, same as 2013. And then what is the process for which we, we apply that?
Right, right. We'll get there. I think my, what I've heard from my constituents is they want to make sure that public and safety is a priority. Some of my constituents, I'll be really honest, they, they don't feel like this is a priority. And so I've asked them, "So how do you feel? Cut it out? You know, decrease it by five percent, ten percent?" And some of them said, "If every department, you know, how can, how can we, and I agree, how can we ask our departments to ask, come up with a five percent increase or decrease? And then we're not doing that with social services." Now, and then I, what I would like to propose is maybe, maybe throwing that five percent out there and then maybe hearing from them, you know. Of course, I know I've heard enough, but as, as a new council member, I don't know if all of our council members realize what these agencies do. And that's why, to me, it would be important to hear from them. But that's just me talking. That's just one. Other council members might not want to do that. So if I could get your feedback on that. But we have gone into our departments and asked them to cut their budget by a percent, even if it isn't five percent, one percent, two percent or something.
Well, I'll try and start it off. We've, we've got a couple of layers of problems with this process, I think. For one thing, this year in the, in the budget workbooks for 2014 that we were given, we have entities like downtown Topeka and T-PAC mixed in with social services. And we really, I mean, when we finished the budget process, the staff restructured that like in the, in the 2013 budget, you'll, I think they call it economic development, but they grouped the items that really aren't social services separately. And we really do look at them separately. The other complication is that I know when we, as we, there are a couple of steps to doing the social services because there, when we create the youth and social services block grant, there's money from the general fund, or there has been for years, and there's also money that comes over from CDBG. And they get, the money gets pulled together and they get considered together so that there is one process anyway, even if eventually later, typically what's happened is that an administrative decision has been made after the funding allocations were made in terms of whether they're funded out of general fund or CDBG or a combination. So we do need to think of those layers. I'm assuming that what you're talking about in general in terms of staging is just making those social service decisions, but we need to clarify that.
The, the, well, what I'm asking for, you know, the amount of money that was funded in 2013, the four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, you're absolutely right, it was broken down into various programs. A hundred and forty-one thousand was, was funded through the general fund and came to, you know, this council approval, recommendations came, and then also the remainder of that came from mayor recommendations or approvals going forward for the budget last year. So...
But, but you're talking about a possible extended grant process just for the youth and social services rather than those other items, right?
Anything that's covered under, what I am talking about is anything that was currently in the 2013 budget that was covered under the general fund grant program, which as you identified, some have the youth program, but also some were, were different than that. There were some more inclusive organizations, but the totality of the four seventy-nine is what I'm talking about included.
But that includes the cemeteries, the downtown Topeka? It does not. So you're really just talking about social services.
It's youth and social services plus DTI. So it's four hundred and four thousand dollars for youth and social services. So that, you might want to look at the, grab the schedule in one ninety-eight in your book, Karen, if you've got that.
Yeah. Well, I was looking over my shoulder here because I had pulled my page and...
Sorry. So you'll see DTI is in there.
And DTI is the only one then on the way you've got it structured this year?
Well, there's Keep America Beautiful is also in there.
Yeah.
And Community Resources Council. Those are the three that aren't really directly youth. Yeah. And I'm sorry, I was trying to keep it very simple. There, there were a smattering of those that you could make a case that they didn't maybe belong there, but they have historically been dealt there. So I want to make this recommendation simple. What was included in terms of that funding base last year, the four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, that's what we need to make a decision on pertaining to this year in this item. You're talking about the application process, correct?
Social service applications.
Two questions, I think, right? One is, one is the funding and then the other one is the process of allocating the funding.
Correct.
Yeah. The approval. How do, how does this body make a decision to approve? And it has, it's a two-step. One is it's a total amount and one is how do you go through that?
I think it's important to note, especially for those who are at home and who haven't accessed the budget, we're talking about organizations such as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boy Scouts, or excuse me, Boys and Girls Club, CASA, which is Child in Need of Care, YWCA, Jayhawk, Agency on Aging, LULAC. It's important to highlight, you know, what actual organizations in actuality. We're talking about funds that will go directly for our elderly community and for, for the youth of our city. So in being new to this process, I'm still kind of open to suggestions as, you know, I hear what Councilwoman Hiller and the deputy mayor is, are saying, you know, and I'd be curious to actually hear from Councilwoman De La Isla, if you don't mind.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please. What I find that provides a great opportunity for us as a body is the opportunity for us to decide whether it's in a forum such as this or in a work session, what are the top priorities that the city is going to identify as the areas that we really want to fund? And it would allow for us to have a discussion to determine, okay, so as the city, what are the areas that we as a city want to make a larger impact on? Further, what this sounds to me, as somebody that writes grants and sometimes even looks at grants, the other thing that it provides is outcome measurement. How productive have different organizations been with the funds that they have been allocated? And what impact that is having with regards to our city? So therefore, it allows us the opportunity as a body to really go ahead and have a serious evaluation, rather than just saying, "I'm just going to go ahead and repeat the funding for the organizations that are already here." It allows us as a body to make some really serious deep policy decisions that tell us and give us guidance on, okay, this is where as a body we want the funding to go to. So, I mean, that's what I find exciting about, if you want to call it exciting, you know, good about this process.
Before I call on you, Karen, are these the only applicants? Are these all the applicants that have applied for 2014?
Yeah.
Are these are just what's been brought forth from 2013 to 2014?
Deputy Mayor, the process as it exists today has not really been open to allow new applicants to come in and that's the thing that causes me the most concern.
Exactly, exactly. I agree, I agree with you. So, but at this late in the game, I guess we can't have that application process, is what you're saying.
I am not saying that. My recommendation is that we do identify a number. We immediately divide, define and implement a very simple process that will allow, number one, what are your priorities? Number two, who's interested? And make it a, make it a streamlined, simple process. Identify a body that can serve as your citizen lay panel to review those and to understand those.
And I agree with that, but at this late in the game, we can't identify a body. We're going to, we're going to have to wait and come back.
But, Madam Chairman, all, all we need the council to do over the next three weeks is to approve an appropriation in block in the budget to allow us to then run that process because those funds can't be spent until January one. So the idea that we have to have this all resolved in the next three weeks is really a false choice. We need to have a big picture number, an umbrella number, included in the budget for appropriation, but those monies can't actually be spent for another five and a half months at this point.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Karen?
I'm just sort of actively listening, I think, to what the city manager is saying and what Councilwoman De La Isla has said, and also recalling some things I said before. These agencies need to know as soon as possible. But if we went with what the city manager was proposing at first to give ourselves about, however we did it, about a sixty-day window, go ahead and, and get a number through this budget and then give ourselves a sixty-day window to get those allocations made. And if the process in that sixty-day window should, you know, once we voted on the budget, if we're going to open it up, then other agencies could get an application in by day one of whatever that sixty-day window would be, even this year, if that window, let's say, would be September one to October thirty-first, let's say. And then we meet as a body of the whole in a work session or however we would do that to talk about our priorities and what kind of outcomes we want to hear from those entities. And then, both as a learning process, as well as to make those allocations, we sit as a body of the whole and hear each one of those eight, read the apps and make those and hear the presentations and then make, make an allocation decision within that sixty-day window. Would that do it?
That would be a question for the city manager?
It's a question for you. I mean, you can, it's your process. You can do whatever you want.
Does that fit what you were sort of envisioning we might be able to do?
Yeah. It's what I was, what I was seeking was to, going back to informed decision-making process, was to allow a citizen body to really have that opportunity to participate in this and advise you.
Just a second, city manager. It's my understanding that this meeting is over at twelve noon and it is twelve noon. I'd like to make a motion that we extend until, we extend the meeting until we...
Thirty minutes.
No, until we finish, until we finish this discussion. That's my motion.
We didn't have a specific time, but that's fine.
That's my motion, and we need to, it's twelve oh one now, so I've already missed it, and so this meeting has to adjourn.
I think we're fine if we want to reconvene and meet.
No, no, we can't. The meeting was scheduled till twelve, and we had to do it before twelve oh one, and it's twelve oh one.
Notice what happened, it was from nine to ten.
That's right. That's right.
We're getting there. We got that timeframe, we could have been a motion.
Right, and I, I got caught up.
Well, I should have.
You should have. You should have. That will come out of your budget.
You're tough.
Okay, I will get with the city manager, and we will have discussion. We will meet on Monday, and is it at five thirty?
It's at five o'clock.
Five o'clock. I, I was told that there was some discrepancy about getting in here.
Did we get in here?
It'll be okay.
Five o'clock. Okay, the next budget meeting will be at five o'clock on Monday at the LEC office.
If I can make just a short, just not official, but council members, you received a memo from me pertaining to the code issue. If you would look at that, we're, wanted to spend a little bit more background on it, perhaps we could do that on Monday, that we look at the, all the aspects of code compliance rather than as the possi- as well as the possibility of extra code enforcement people.
Okay, this concludes our budget session until, thank you, have a good afternoon.
Thank you all.
I, I just think Chad's going to get out.
Well, yeah, and I looked at it.